And good evening. Welcome to the school committee, March 18th, 2021, school committee meeting. It is 7:13 PM. We are rejoining open session. All of the members, with the exception of Ms. Handstad, are present at the moment. This evening, I'm going to jump around the agenda to accommodate different people's schedules, et cetera, et cetera. So just bear with me. This evening, I'm going to jump first right to the students as they are typically usually very brief and then move right to the governance committee. So Elise, great to see you. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
Good. All right. You've got the floor.
Um, yeah, so this week, we kind of got into our first week of in-person rehearsals for theater, which we're super excited about. We are kind of figuring out how to adapt to that as we're working with using our space as best as possible while still staying six feet apart and mask. But it's been super exciting to get back into the space and we're so thankful to everyone who worked so hard to make that happen for us because we really, really appreciate it. Along with that, many fall two sports have gone into full swing and they are all super excited. Swim volleyball, indoor track has won their first meet and they said that that went super well. And Unified Basketball Senior Night is hopefully on the 31st. They said that that's not 100%, but they would love it. People could stream the game because they're super excited about that senior night. Along with that, senior superlative voting was yesterday and everybody I know is having a lot of fun voting for that. And in terms of academics, progress reports for term three went out this week. And yeah, that's where you are.
Elise, I don't think I've ever seen that joy in you, unlike tonight when you talk about the theater. I'm psyched about that. I'm happy.
It's really great to be back.
Oh, I bet. Well, thank you very much. And as always, you know that if you need to, you need to leave and go do work or what have you, you know, we appreciate it, but thank you for joining us tonight. All right. I'm going to jump right into the governance committee and some of their members are still coming on, so I'm just going to take a moment to say, um, thank you again for allowing us the schedule change. I'm sorry for the delay, but I appreciate your patience with us. And Sam, you've got the floor. I'm going to have you start if you want to give a overview and then, um, and then we can open it up to questions if that works.
All right. I think I have to ask a procedural question first, which is assuming you started your meeting with the statement that has to be, uh, read before each virtual meeting so that our committee joining you doesn't have to do that right now.
Yep. So we opened our, um, we opened, had open session and I read that statement prior to us going into executive session. So I've already read it. Does that count for you too?
I think it does, based on past meetings we've had.
Okay. I think it's, let's assume it's safe, right?
I got a thumbs up from Scott, so we're okay.
All right. Good.
Too many times.
Take it away, Sam.
All right. Well, uh, we're delighted to be in front of the, uh, school committee, talk to them about what we're recommending. I think a little preview or not preview, but, uh, sort of background information might be helpful, um, you know, in terms of why we were created in the first place, uh, being the fact that really Holliston has not undertaken a comprehensive review of its government structure and efficiency for over 40 years. And in that time, clearly we all know that local government has become more challenging, more demanding, uh, requiring greater efficiency to meet service demands and changing conditions, within, you know, continued limited revenue growth. And in this fiscal year, Holliston's operating budget is $64 million, which supports a workforce of about 795 employees. So it's a big, complex operation and, um, that's what we're looking at. We have a basically a three-year term. So sometimes the question is asked, why do we start with the, you know, the budget bylaw recommendation? And mainly because Holliston's bylaws are silent on this issue, uh, on the development of responsibilities of the budget process, which has led to some tension among some boards, committees and department heads. We now have a new full-time administrator with direct, or town administrator with direct experience in municipal finance, uh, working with Holliston's experienced financial officers, which creates a basically an opportunity for a professional, full-time financial team, uh, to develop the budget subject to the independent review of the finance committee in a clear and timely process. And the by, the recommendations that we've created or established will establish a structure or mechanism to ensure the budget process is exercised consistently and effectively as town officials, board and committee members change. And this also comes back to us from conversations we've had, but other town officials, uh, you know, in the area and outside. The proposals that we have are derived in part due to the committee's extensive review of the charters or general bylaws of scores of other Massachusetts towns and discussions with, uh, officials in other towns. We've identified, you know, a number of towns that have budget development bylaws. We've developed relationships with these towns through sort of dividing up, um, with, you know, the, the top officials, the town manager or the town administrator with the members of the committee. And that's been very helpful, you know, learning more about their operations beyond what you can get from just reading their bylaws or charters. So we've, we've recommended, um, basically a, a new budget development bylaw with, which modifies three other, um, bylaw articles. I think the bottom line recommendation is to place greater responsibility for budget development with the full-time town administrator and the town's full-time financial team. The finance committee would focus on its independent and robust review of the Warren Articles and it's, which would include the budget, operating budget and capital budget. And the town administrator would be responsible for compiling, uh, and submitting to the select board, the comprehensive operating budget for the ensuing year and the five-year capital program. Proposed budgets of the school committee and other independently elected boards would be compiled, uh, compiled, not prepared, compiled by the town administrator and reviewed for compliance with budget guidelines. And then these budgets would not be subject to approval by the select boards, who would have the responsibility for, uh, adopting their own budget and then submitting all the budget, the comprehensive budget to the finance committee for its review. Now, that's not as specifically laid out in the February, um, draft that you've looked at. So that's as a result of some of the changes that we've made, uh, from the conversations we've had so far. So the finance committee would, uh, you know, provide the comprehensive review of all Warren Articles, including the operating capital budgets and issue its report with recommendations and explanations to the town meeting. We're suggesting a new seven-member capital planning committee that would replace the capital improvements committee, which is a subcommittee of the finance committee. And it would be many of the same, um, members, I think, in the end, but it would be a committee that would, you know, do a lot of the legwork in preparing the capital budget for the ensuing year as well as the five-year plan, which would be, that information would be submitted to the town administrator and the town administrator would then finalize it to present it to the select board. You know, other issues that maybe of interest is that there's, uh, we try to be, um, I think from looking at a lot of other town bylaws, uh, we follow the pattern that is pretty prevalent in not specifying a specific date where the school committee would be required to submit its budget to the town administrator. We've basically, there's a, we've, what we've recommended is a basically a meeting of key players, uh, at the beginning of the year. That's changed from the draft you've looked at. We've now changed that from October, uh, by at least the, uh, first Monday of October to the first Monday of November, uh, to give everybody a little more time. That meeting would, would consist of the superintendent, the school finance officer. We, you, we didn't use business manager in case the title might change at any time, but it would be the chief person dealing with the finance. So right now that's Keith. It would also consist of the chair of the school committee. The other three members would be the town administrator, the chair of the select board and the chair of the finance committee. So of the six members who would be part of this early meeting, three of them would be from the school department. And the purpose of that meeting would be to really talk about what the town's fiscal condition is, what next year looks like, uh, talk about what should perhaps the, the budget guidelines be, work out an informal timetable. The town administrator would then take all that information and by November 15th, prepare a budget message, which would come out to all the departments and agencies and boards, committees, uh, as well as, as budget guidelines, um, that would then be followed. When the school committee adopts its budget, it would submit it to the town administrator, who would again, put that into the comprehensive budget, which would then be submitted to the, um, select board for its review. Although, as I said earlier, the school committee budget and the other budgets of the independently elected boards would just be a pass-through. They would not be approved, uh, by the, by the select board. There is, I mean, we've been, it's been recommended by a number of different town officials that there needs to be some discipline in terms of the timing of the budget. And for that, we have a specific time for the town administrator to present the, I guess, the preliminary comprehensive budget to the select board and the time that the select board needs to act on it. And then that's also true for the, uh, the five-year capital program budget as well. And so that is, but the issue in terms of the school committee budget and its submission to the town administrator is really, um, not stipulated, other than to say it needs to be completed and sent to the town administrator in time that it really can be understood its impact on the total town budget. So basically it means that the town administrator and the superintendent and the school business manager would work together and figuring out what the, the, the time necessary for town administrator to be able to submit the comprehensive budget. Now, it, it is the preliminary budget, which means that, uh, in the time that the select man, select board receives the budget and has to act on the budget, that it's, which is 30 days, that's also time that, uh, you know, the town administrator and the, and the school officials would have to, or the, I could say more of the school officials would have to finalize its budget. So it may be that a budget would be presented, which is not, which is still a preliminary budget, um, and more time would be available, um, before the select board has to act because when they act, they also have to submit the, the school budget, um, you know, to the finance committee. So that's really a negotiated date, not one set in bylaw. And we've tried to be as informal as possible in terms of that structure and rely on, you know, the early, um, I guess late October or first of November, first Monday in November meeting to work out sort of the preliminary details as to the timing, rather than stipulate them in the bylaw. So I think that's sort of a quick overview. And all of us are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you for that, Sam. And I just, again, I, I appreciate it. I, I'm excited about your committee. One of the things personally that I've been advocating for is a, um, strategic or master plan, and I feel like this is part of the roots of that. So I just, I really appreciate all the time and effort that you all have, have put on this. And so we definitely have questions from the committee, but before the committee asks questions, I guess I want to just offer to the governance committee, do any of you want to add anything, reiterate anything? It sounded like there was a subliminal message to make Keith the CFO of the schools or something?
No. I vote yes. Hi, Keith.
Scott, did you have anything? Did you want to share?
No. The, the only thing I would share, Scott, I think the only thing I would share, uh, and Sam alluded to this, um, two things. Uh, one, we've had, this could be our 24th, um, meeting. And we have engaged quite a few of the, the, the other towns, uh, the, the finance group, uh, the town administrator on his own, the FinCom, the select board, you guys. And, and we're taking the feedback. We are, we're taking feedback that, uh, and we discuss it amongst ourselves and we've made some changes. I think you've heard some of them already. So, you know, we have, um, a, a public hearing slated, I think it's for next week, if I'm not mistaken, uh, to get some, uh, to get the word out and to get some feedback from, from, uh, the town residents as well. So, um, but this, this is the first of several items that we're going to be looking into. Three years is a long time, but, uh, this one's very important, I think, to the town. And, um, that's why it's number one on our list.
Christina or Lynn, did you want to add anything? And I'm not putting it on the spot, so if you have nothing, just say, no, I'm good.
Nope. Nothing from me. Thanks.
Sam, you did a great, I'll work you.
Great.
No, I, I actually, Stacy, if I may, I, I, and I, sorry to bore the guys on, on our committee, but, uh, so the last time this review was done, as Sam said, was 40 years ago. And, um, I'm not going to look at my notes, but 40 years ago, president, uh, was President Reagan, uh, the Rubik's Cube was invented and Princess Di and Charles got married. That's the last time that the governance in this town was looked at. So that's a long time ago and it should be, it should occur more frequently. And that's something else we're considering as well.
Are you trying to make us feel old, Scott?
No, I'm trying to make the last time we looked at this as a long time ago.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. I could, I could even add, this is Sam, that, uh, you know, last time, I guess it was the committee, uh, Government Study Committee of 1988. I mean, that was like 33 years ago. Uh, and that's the, that's the recommendation that resulted in the elected treasurer and elected accountant, uh, becoming appointed positions. And that's, you know, another thing we'll look at is the fact we have, probably compared to a lot of other towns, um, you know, a large number of independently elected boards. So there's no one body in charge. And it's, you know, as we said, as I said earlier, it is, it is more complex. It's more demanding. And what we're seeing in other towns is that they're working on, you know, increasing the professionalism of their, their town. And, uh, you know, we haven't done anything in a comprehensive way. I mean, our, our, our focus is just on the governance side. I know there is now some discussion about creating a long-range planning committee, um, and that would have to report annually, but, um, this town is behind this, you know, the, where, where it ought to be. And we're trying to start, we're starting with one issue. And as Scott said, there's a whole slew of different issues dealing just with governance that we'll want to tackle over the next two years after this.
No, no. I appreciate that. All right. School committee members, um, of course are all over the board. So I see Cynthia, Lisa and Louise. So Cynthia, Lisa and Louise.
I guess, thank you for, um, all your work on behalf of the town, just first of all. I appreciate you coming to our meeting. I, um, I, I have, I'm sure other people are going to have their other questions, but I guess I'm looking for you, keep mentioning that other towns that you've been looking at, and I'm wondering if there is another town that's using this particular adoption of, uh, timeline and, and how you're, uh, with the way the select board works and the way the school committee reports and all those things. If you have a, an example of a town that's using that so that we can kind of look to see how it works in like a real world scenario.
I'll take that, Sam. We do. I mean, we, we basically have several towns that have adopted bylaw articles or charter articles that lay out the budget development process. So as I've said in the past, um, there's nothing in what we're recommending that's original. This is all basically taken from other town bylaws or, or budget development articles.
Sure.
Uh, and there's, and then, you know, the other thing to say is that, you know, when you read a number of these, there's a consistency, um, in terms of how they lay out the process. So we're.
I'm just looking for an example. Like I actually just want to go over to there.
We have, we have 50.
You do have some? Oh, great.
That we've looked at and we, and we view, we've looked at their, um, they all have bylaw articles, um, or, or charter articles that, uh, lay out the budget development process. So, uh, I'll send Stacy the table that gives you the, the 15 towns and then you can take your pick. These are all, uh, we also have looked at some of the financial indicators, uh, and Holliston fits in, uh, very nicely with that. They're all double A, triple A, um, run towns. They, there's one that's, uh, A plus, but it has a very good, um, set of bylaws that we've, we've relied on. So again, nothing's original here. This is all what other towns are now.
It's really best practices from the other towns is what Sam's getting at as well.
Thank you.
Let's see if I can find it and then I'll attach it in the chat.
Okay. So I have a few questions. I wanted to ask first, so I'm on the budget subcommittee of the school committee and I'm wondering what would change for us in terms of the process we go through now? So right now, we develop our budget, you know, we get it from the superintendent and the business manager and the administrators, you know, come to us with their proposals and then we take this budget and both the school committee and the budget subcommittee are working on it and, you know, at different points in time. But the key step with up for us with the town is to go to the finance committee, present our budget and have really deep discussions about what we're asking for and why and what the town can afford. So how is that going to change under this proposal?
And you two want to take that?
I, I don't think it does change. I think the finance committee's role is reviewing and, and dealing with the school committee as they always have. And when I was on the finance committee, I was the liaison to the school committee and I don't see that changing at all.
Well, let me, let me add, I, I mean, I think there would be one change. It's that your, your direct contact would not be the finance committee. Your.
Okay, that's a big change.
Contact would be the town administrator and more in terms of just the timing, uh, issue. So the process would change in that the.
That actually, that ends, that kind of answers the important part of my question. So that's my concern. You just, you just got to my biggest concern right there.
Well, that shouldn't be a concern because basically we're, we're basically saying we should be relying on the full-time professionals to, in the development of the budget. And the finance committee would still retain its responsibilities. Just remember, just remember that over the last five years, the finance committee has played a larger role than frankly, it's legally authorized to play. And.
Okay. I don't know that I agree with that statement.
We had a town administrator who wasn't as strong or as interested in, in finance matters. We now have a town administrator who is, has the experience. We have a very experienced financial team working for the town. We're going to, our recommendation is take advantage of the full-time professionals and the finance committee continues to play its critical role. And there will be hopefully reconciliation at the end of the process. If there isn't, then the finance committee.
Sam, with all due respect, I understand, I was listening to everything you had to say, but this is my key concern and I really need to ask some questions about this with all due respect. My concern is that our key contact being the town administrator rather than the finance committee is a fundamental shift in how we have always done things. And it's really important for the public to understand. The finance committee is an independent body that does not answer to the selectmen, does not answer to the school committee and, and has a separate, independent, you know, as unbiased as you can get, view of the budget holistically. The town administrator works for the selectmen. The selectmen are looking at the other side of the budget picture in town. The schools are about half of the, of the Holliston budget. All the town departments are the other half. That's where the selectmen have purview. So this is a giant fundamental change to the way that we have operated. And I don't know why the school committee, I don't, I don't understand how it's in our best interest to go from being reviewed and negotiating with an independent elected body of seven, you know, which is giving you a lot more opinions versus, you know, going to the town administrator and who, you know, is under the selectmen, which is only three people. And it's three people who don't necessarily have any kind of financial background. That's, you know, I'm, I'm sure some of them do. And I know we have a, in fact, we have a new select, uh, member of the select board who came from the finance committee. So I, you know, I'm, I'm not commenting on them as individuals, but I am commenting on the way that they are elected and what their chosen roles are. The selectmen have traditionally and for a very long time been completely separate from the school budgeting process for a really good reason. And it's because the selectmen are in control of the town departments, the school with the superintendent and our business manager. We are responsible for the school side. And it, it's very different to take that away from an independently elected body that doesn't have any more allegiance to the town side versus the school side and instead give that to a group of people who do have, you know, you know, by right, a, a different type of allegiance.
Let me, this is Sam. Let me say that we've heard those exact arguments from the finance committee. And I will repeat that we are using as models, other towns that are doing exactly what we're recommending and it's worked fine for them. And, you know, the process of the, the system we're using is, is all, we have, again, haven't looked at it for 40 years. It's a different time, different conditions. And in our view, and I will add that the members of this committee represent over 100 years of municipal experience. So we've, we know what we're doing.
Have any of you served on the school committee?
Uh, I don't think so, but.
Okay. So we're coming from a very different perspective and I, and that's what I'm trying to get across. I, you know, we have.
Yeah. But I, I think, you know, your, your argument, which is the FinCom's argument that, you know, because.
No, it's not the FinCom's argument. This is my argument as a member of the.
Well, it's exactly the same as the FinCom's argument.
That doesn't invalidate it.
That doesn't.
It doesn't.
At all. I would prefer, I, I, I think it's in the best interest of the schools to be negotiating our budget with an independent body as opposed to a group of people who, and they should represent the other side of the town budget. And I, and I think I really question whether this gets into, I'm not a lawyer, but I mean, statutorily, we're responsible for our budget. You know, this is not, it is never, it's not, we're not under the selectmen, we're not under the town administrators. So if the town administrator is going to now be playing the role that the finance committee is currently playing, I, I have, I personally have to object to that.
You're responsible for your budget after the appropriation. You still have to comply with overall budget guidelines. There's no change there. Your authority starts when the appropriation is made as to how you allocate the funds.
And we do, there are state laws to, to.
Right, exactly.
We don't need, we don't need any changes to, to perform those functions the way they're performed right now. We have state laws that cover them.
They're not recommending a change. Your allocation of funds after it's appropriated, not before.
Lisa, could I maybe help with this a little?
Sorry.
Hi, it's Ann-Louise Handstead. Um, I, I do want to thank you all for coming and I know there's been 18,000 hours that you've all put into this. So I just have some questions about that and then lead back and maybe able to clarify. I think some of our. and then lead back and maybe able to clarify, I think, some of our concerns on process and timing. So, Sam, forgive me, in the beginning you mentioned that you looked at scores of towns, and then you indicated there were fifteen towns that have the model that you're proposing out of, I think, roughly three hundred and fifty towns in the Commonwealth, so. Did you, well, just let me ask my question. Did you, did you look at sort of, from a bird's eye view, what's happening with, you know, across the Commonwealth and different governance models that are producing, if you will, successful outcomes in terms of financial management, and we can, you know, put on the sideline what that, what those parameters are, but did you look at it that way and then come up with, well, here's fifteen towns that seem to be doing, you know, doing really well, and oh, look, they have very similar governance models? Or did you go and say, we're looking for a governance model that centers itself within the town administrator, and I'm not objecting to that per se, and has an appointed finance committee? How, how did you arrive at this in your discovery process? Was it looking for a certain model, or you did due diligence to identify towns that have comparable goals, comparable economic foundations, you know, tax base, et cetera, and performance in terms of everything from their bond rating to, you know, tax structure, so that we say, this looks like us, let's identify best practices, and it just so happens they all have the same model?
Well, this is Sam, I think it was starting off as just reviewing bylaws.
Okay.
Of towns. We did look at what the, well, I guess that's another issue. We basically, once we decided that we, our first initiative was going to be dealing with the bud, a process, we looked at, you know, probably fifty other town bylaws and to see what, what we found, and in that, you know, discovery process, came across, you know, several towns that had in their either charter or bylaw a budget development. Basically, called fiscal, fiscal practice and procedures was the common term for the title of the article. And so, and, you know, the fifteen is just a slice of towns that have that. We just, we just picked the fifteen and, and because, more because their, you know, their bylaws or their charters seem pretty reasonable and, and fit what we were looking for.
Fit what you were looking for, okay, that, that answers that, that's helpful.
If I could please follow above.
Yeah, hi, Paul.
Henry's question. The initial pool of fifteen towns was culled from data provided by the Department of Revenue's Division of Local Services, and it was, the group was assembled based on demographics, population, income per capita, assessed value per capita, size of budget, and so forth. So, in other words, we created that list of fifteen before we tackled any specific issue regarding the structure of town government. We looked really at demographics to try to identify a pool of towns that were similar to Holliston from a demographic perspective, and therefore would be a useful group to compare ourselves to.
Okay, that's helpful, and there were only fifteen towns that had a representative profile comparable to ours? Or were there others that might have had different bylaws? And arguably, performed equally as well?
We weren't, we weren't looking at bylaws at that point when we were identified in the pool of towns. As I say, we were looking at demographics, and beyond those fifteen towns, the demographics of other towns beyond that were not closely similar to Holliston. So, we left it at fifteen.
So, demographics, but not strategic goals and objectives in terms of growth, economic revenue, capital infrastructure, et cetera, just demographics?
Right.
Okay, is it fair to say that if that list had been expanded, you might find other equally as successful structures for the bylaws that could support a different approach?
Well, if we looked at all three hundred and sixty-one cities and towns, yeah, I'm sure we could identify some other, others' approaches, but there may be towns with fifty thousand people, there may be towns with three thousand people. We, we had, you know, we had to start someplace, so we started with a demographic profile that, you know, closely as possible matched Holliston, given the pool of three hundred and twenty or so towns when you take out the cities in Massachusetts.
Okay, that, that's fine, so to the second question, when you said you decided to start with budget, was there something in the current process that was raising a concern, or something in our overall financial management that suggested that the town is not operating efficiently, effectively, or producing a solid outcome? Is there any history of that?
Well.
Recognizing the whole five-year debacle with the prior town administrator.
Well, okay, so, but that's, that's an important factor, I think that.
Yeah, it is.
That, it was a different situation.
Right, it was.
It's also, it's also a matter of, you know, the, the fact that the changing conditions and needing to, you know, create a, a, a structure in our mind that, that would be best to, you know, provide, you know, the, the more effective and, and coordinated budget process than what's there now, so.
Okay, well.
And take advantage of the full-time professionals.
That I agree with. I think it's really important to be able to tap into the expertise, for instance, that our current town administrator has, but it's, I think it's interesting to note that our prior one was not the, the full-time professional with the expertise we had hoped. So, if this process had been in place, we would have been in a really difficult spot. Now, moving on from that, you know, I think Mr. Ahern is a fantastic addition to the team in, in the town, and, you know, he's, he's really great to work with, so. You know, purely based on that and the fact that he's a constant while elected officials change over, I certainly appreciate that challenge. I personally don't have an issue with submitting our budget to Mr. Ahern for him to compile as town administrator in working with another board. I think the questions that I have relate to the order in this process, who views what, when, and who's reviewing and approving and setting certain guidelines and assumptions. So, if I'm reading it correctly, we've established an initial meeting with the chairs of the boards and the town administrator to set a timeline, correct? And, and I think I heard you say in that meeting, it would be an initial consultation, this group would get together, talk about the state of the town and review economic data, et cetera. Did I misunderstand that?
No, that's correct.
Okay, so here's one of the challenges, since none of you have served on school committee. School committee is chartered with several key responsibilities. One of those is obviously budget management, and interestingly, the only subcommittees that we are required to form are policy, budget, and a review of the superintendent. So, we're required to form a subcommittee that specifically focuses on budget issues. They can be daunting and time-consuming to review, there's a lot of due diligence, so it doesn't make sense to have seven people go through all of that. So, in the, in the state's infinite wisdom, we set up a budget subcommittee, and that subcommittee, much like our policy committee, comes back to the committee at large with recommendations, detailed analysis, et cetera, et cetera, our committee at large then votes and approves. So, it's only the committee at large that votes on a final recommendation, if you will, or other changes, but the subcommittee has a lot of work to do. So, right away at the front end of your process, you've got no representation from the body within the school committee that does eighty percent of the work, and that I do think is a concern, and the only way for the chair to convey that information would then be to break an open meeting law and get that information to the three people sitting on the subcommittee. So, you'd either have to add representation to your upfront meeting with a budget subcommittee individual, or change out who's sitting in that meeting, and I'm not prescribing either, but right up front, I think the process does not understand how a school committee actually operates, so that's a key issue.
Well, let me just say that for forty-six years, I sat in on all this boss school committee meetings, so I may not have been a member, but I certainly.
Fine.
School issues, but let me just say that, as you heard me earlier, you know, the, the, the business manager is part of that meeting, the superintendent is part of that meeting, the chair of the committee is part of that meeting. I would assume that the manager is, is sitting with the subcommittee at its meetings, and so you are represented.
The chair of the committee is not necessarily a member of the subcommittee. Sometimes, depends on how the committees get formed and sometimes not, so. There's not only no requirement, it's, it's not always appropriate, necessary ideal. And respectfully, while our business manager and superintendent have the day-to-day responsibility for, you know, managing the budget, the ultimate budget responsibility lies in the hands of this committee, so. That remains a concern, so I'm just suggesting that that's a modification you would need to make. You would need to include somebody else at that meeting.
Paul, about, good, Henry, what was your concern about the open meeting law?
Well, we have this concern today. We have three members on the budget subcommittee and the chair, okay? If the chair's the only one attending your budget meetings, and then the chair is coming back to us, or we're getting it secondhand, which we prefer not to through the superintendent and the budget, business manager, but if, if the chair is somehow interacting with information on the three of us, then there's four, it's a quorum, and we break the open meeting law. We're very careful about that today.
Well, if I could, with all due respect, if you're simply sharing information without any form of deliberation or discussion, if, if one member of the committee says, here's the information I received at that meeting and shares it, as long as there's no discussion, there's no deliberation, that's not a problem.
But that's already an impediment to the process, Paul, respectfully, like, the level of detail that we go into and the information that we look at. It, it's, it's not as simple as a funnel at that rate, then just send us an email and we'll hope for the best. I'm just asking that you include somebody else from the budget subcommittee at that, at that meeting.
If, how about if it were to say the chair of the school committee or the chairs designate?
Yeah, that would work. I, I think that's fine, depending on how comfortable the chair is to, and willingness to designate somebody from the budget subcommittee, but fine. Okay, so that's, that was sort of the first thing. The timing, which it's not entirely clear to me on the timing here, and it sounds like there's some flexibility in that, but the timing and the process are interlinked here. If I understand it correctly, school committee is going to provide the town administrator with the budget and present it to the select board for their review, and then only after the select board has, I want to make sure I get the language right here. Not going to get the language right, but the implication was only after the select board has had an opportunity to view this and consulted with the town administrator, does a budget get passed, the whole town budget get passed to the finance committee? Is that correct, or did I miss something?
That's correct.
Okay. So, by that point in time, anything could change, and then we're in a situation where the finance, it's pretty much an FYI for the finance committee, because at that point, there's no opportunity for us to then work through, you know, what, what may or may not sort of be, be able to be included in the budget. And let me say this, we don't negotiate with the finance committee. That was the one thing I wanted to clarify earlier. We work with them to come to a number that they feel comfortable they can support in a recommendation at town meeting in consultation with the town administrator. That process makes sense to me because there's no conflict of interest, and the finance committee does not have a single department reporting to them, and we are not subjugated to the finance committee, nor are we subjugated to the select board. But at least in that dialogue, we know there's no conflict of interest, that they are objective in looking, as objective as in looking at our numbers as anybody else's, and in working with the town administrator to provide a formal recommendation to town meeting. They are the only objective body able to do that, where the select board inherently has a conflict of interest because there are a number of departments that you represent. Now, I have no problem working with the town administrator on this because there are yet other departments, you know, board trustees, or library, what have you, that don't necessarily report into the select board. So, again, it makes sense to have the town administrator working to compile all this, but it seems to me that there's just an inherent conflict having the select board be the body that reviews everything first and becomes the first filter and lens before anything gets to the finance committee. And by that point in time, it's, it's so late in the process. In addition, you won't send it off to the finance committee, if I understand this, until you've held a hearing, a town hearing. Now, the school committee holds its own hearing with respect to our budget so that we can inform our budget request with input from the town and from the community, and then we sometimes would, you know, depending on what that feedback is, might need to revise our budget, and we will go back and do just that. Doesn't happen often, I'll tell you that, but, but we then, you know, have that information on clocked, and it's an iterative process with the finance committee and presumably with the town administrator, because then we've started, we have a better sense of where the numbers are falling in terms of, you know, total town requests and needs, and then they say, look, you know, you've got to get closer to guideline, or everybody's at guideline, what the heck are you guys doing? Or whatever it is, and then we work to get there. Or we'll make a case for why, you know, just like any other department, we feel there's, there's a greater need here. But how do we make that case to you, where you have a vested interest to approve budgets within your percu? So, that's sort of, I think, where we. So that's sort of, I think, where Lisa was really getting to it. That objective third party is essential in this dialogue, and it doesn't preclude us from tapping into the expertise of the town administrator. I just got off a call earlier tonight where we were talking about capital, and, you know, Mr. Ahern has done an extraordinary job in combination with the finance committee in putting together a first pass, a really meaningful, uh, capital plan and documentation around it. And we feel comfortable with that process because he comes to it from a very objective standpoint. So I think that's, that's a major concern.
Can we respond to that?
Please do, sorry, because I have one more.
Yeah. I mean, if you're comfortable with working with the town administrator and then also working with the finance committee, the difference is that, you know, as we say in, in, in the bylaws, the finance, I mean, the select board is not reviewing the school budget with the idea of making cuts, there, it's a pass-through. So it's really
That's the problem.
If you're working
Why is it a pass-through? I'm not even sure I understand the rationale then. Why would be a pass-through through you to the town administrator? Why isn't it the other way around?
It's not, it's not to us. It's, the school committee would, would adopt its budget, and then in that, there is discussions, there would be discussions between the town administrator and the school committee, and, and that, and the finance could be, could be, could be brought into that, but it, it would be really with, with the town administrator. The board is not, you know, approving your budget. It's basically as it is, as it is, at least in recommendations now, along with other independently elected boards, they're presenting their budget to the select board in order for the town administrator, or basically the town administrator, so he can compile the comprehensive budget.
So why
The board is approving the budgets that are under their responsibility, not the school committee's budget.
So, so wait, so then the select board has final approval before town meeting of the budgets that get presented to the town administrator?
No.
I'm sorry, then just explain that again.
Okay. The town administrator has a responsibility to compile comprehensive budget. That means he needs to have in front of him not only the budgets that are responsible to the select board, but also the budgets of this committee and other independently elected boards, that, you know, the, the planning board, the library board. And so he had, he takes that, compiles the budget, the, the, basically the select board approves its budget, and then submits that to the finance committee, along with the school committee budget, and that's already approved by the school committee, and the other independently elected boards. Then the finance committee has the whole comprehensive budget to, to review and make recommendations on. The negotiations that you originally had with just the finance committee would continue to take place, but it would be with the town administrator in order to ensure, you know, I guess, compliance with the budget guidelines, or if there's a need for more to really, uh, you know, negotiate that, probably, you know, this is informal, but bring in the finance committee, but it would really be more directly with the town administrator, who has the ultimate responsibility of compiling the comprehensive budget.
Okay, so I, respectfully, the thing that's still not clear is this pass-through thing through the select board. I don't understand why the select board's reviewing the school committee budget at all. I'm happy to share it with you, as I'm sure anybody else is, but the pass-through thing sounds a little bit more like it's not actually just, you know, us working with, and by the way, I, the word collaboration is the word that I, I think is really missing from this dialogue, so I understand that may not be a word to put into bylaws, but the way, I'll tell you, Mr. Ahern has sat in a number of our budget subcommittee meetings at this point, so that we're keeping everybody in the loop. There's really no flaw in the process, if you will, but we work very closely to make sure where we have the most accurate town information at our fingertips, and similarly, that he is very well informed with where we're headed. So I don't think that's where the challenge is here, but the value of having an objective third party in this equation, I think, cannot be understated, and the only board that can meet with that qualification is the finance committee. So I just don't understand why we're passing through the select board. So maybe we don't need to beat a dead horse, but that's, that's a major concern. The, the timing on it, I think, also is where that passing through is a challenge, because the way it's set up, by the time we, you have it set up, by the time we get to the finance committee in your model, it's so late in the process, there isn't room for the back-and-forth iteration. I suppose there's nothing that prevents us from working with the finance committee, but if they aren't even seeing stuff until you've already held some town hearing on this, I think that really handcuts them in their ability to provide a thorough and objective review on not just our budget, but others.
Let me, let me, while you're at that question, let me respond to that.
Okay.
Once the school committee adopts its budget and submits it to the town administrator, and the town administrator puts it into the comprehensive budget, the select board has thirty days to act on it, and then it must submit it to the finance committee. So, and the hearing would be within that thirty days. So it's not like it's, there's this, all this time that the select board's taking to review the budget. They're not reviewing the school committee budget. I mean, the town administrators will make sure that it, you know, there's resources to fund if it's, and that the guidelines are followed, or if you need be, or funds, but it's the, the time of the select board is basically the thirty days after the town administrator submits the comprehensive budget to them.
So, but if I'm not mistaken, you're pretty far along in the calendar year by the time that stuff gets handed over to the finance committee. I don't think
No, it's at least eighty days before town meeting.
I will let them argue their calendar. I just think it, it squeezes us on the backend in, in that process. Let me make sure I'm clear on one other thing. If I'm not mistaken, the way I read this, your proposal is that the select board will be setting the revenue guidelines for the town?
No, it would be the town administrator. After the, after the first meeting of the key players, the town administrator has like fifteen days to take all that information and release the guidelines and the budget message. So it's, it's, uh, basically the town administrator looking at the, the full picture, total revenues, total expenditures, uh, expected based on that early discussion, and, uh, the guidelines, the budget guidelines that would be, would be followed. I mean, that's not a responsibility of the finance committee. I mean, it has been lately, but it's, that would be, become the, I mean, that would be the town administrator's responsibility, since he has the responsibility by state law to compile the total budget.
So the, well, I mean, it's an inferred responsibility. If the town administrator is compiling the budget, is there anything that says a finance committee cannot provide a recommendation on, an objective recommendation on guidelines for revenue assumptions? Or that they can have input to it? Like, shouldn't there at least be an advisory coming from the finance committee to the town administrator on that? And he, he can, I suppose, ignore it, but should, I mean, that seems like such an essential role that the finance committee would be playing.
So I want to take a pause here for a moment. I really want to focus the conversation about the school committee piece.
This is relevant to the school committee, Stacy. It is.
So I also want other members of the committee to be able to ask questions, and we are at the one hour mark of the
No, this is important stuff.
Well, I have an answer, so ask your question one more time.
My question and concern is that the revenue assumptions are going to be set by the town administrator without input from an objective third party, objective body, and here's why this matters.
Okay, well, all right, let me answer the questions. So Stacy, we can finish this. The administrator will, will determine the guidelines following, um, basically conversations with the finance committee. So the, and that's in the, that's in what we're recommending. So the finance committee is involved, will have input in terms, in terms of the revenue before the town administrator sort of issues the final guidelines. It's not taking the decision, but it has, by the bylaw, uh, opportunity to, to weigh in and, and give its views.
And the ability to publish an advisory letter of some sort. This is why this matters, and it matters for the school committee. Because, as Lisa pointed out earlier, if, if the select board is weighing in on that in any way, A, I have a concern, because typically your average select board member does not have any financial experience, but it's not always true. But if they're weighing in on that in any way, they have an inherent conflict of interest, and that concerns me because revenue guidelines should not be set by any body that has budget responsibility. And it creates a conflict for us. Does that make sense? Or can you understand our, our concern about that?
I don't agree with the premise.
Do you, you don't agree with the premise that there's a conflict of interest, or that there's?
No, I, I mean, first of all, you know, the, the revenue sources, I mean, the property tax represents such a large share of it, that it's not hard to determine what the revenues are going to be for the town, subject to what final state aid will be. So the fact that the town administrator would have the ultimate responsibility after it's discussed in this first meeting of key players, and that it's in conjunction with his discussions with the finance committee, I mean, I don't, I don't see that. It's not like the select board's creating the revenues, it's the town administrator that's preparing the guidelines based on his and his full-time professional financial team's recommendations. Remember, I mean, the finance committee, yes, is independently elected, but it's elected, so there's no guarantee that those members have finance experience.
Well, no, but statistically, you've got seven people, better shot at it, number one. Number two, typically, you don't want to run for finance committee unless you know something about numbers, but, but that aside, I, I just want to make sure that they have the input into that guideline-setting process. If it lies with the town administrator ultimately, so be it, but the input to that should come from an independent board, not from us, not from the select board, or maybe there's some big collaborative discussion, but it concerns me that the ability to set those guidelines would, you know, that, that it wouldn't occur with input from the finance committee, so.
Sorry, this is Len Engel. That the, the bylaw says specifically, it requires consultation with the finance committee. Okay? So that's going to happen.
Okay.
That's not the issue. You're still having us negotiate basically with the town administrator who answers to the selectmen in a way that we have been doing instead with the FinCom. You're taking, you're taking the relationship we had with the FinCom, and you're moving it to the town administrator. And that is inherently a problem because of all the reasons. I, I don't want to beat a dead horse either, and this is absolutely no disrespect to the current board of selectmen, and Mr. Ahern seems to be amazing and doing a wonderful job. But the concern is, they have, they have a specific role to play that has to do with other town departments. The FinCom is the only that body in town that's completely independent and can balance out the needs of the schools with the needs of the other departments in town.
No, I would disagree. I think the town administrators and his financial team are very capable of doing exactly the same thing.
It's no different than, than putting, that's absolutely no different than putting the superintendent in charge of all of the town departments. The town administrator is not involved in the operations of the school, just like our superintendent of schools is not involved in the day-to-day operations of the police department. It is, it's no different than, than making that swap. I mean, I know that's completely outside of, of what we would ever do, but it's to say that he is independent, it's, it's not even fair to him, because that's not his role. He's hired, he's not hired by the school committee, he's hired by the board of selectmen, and he should be working for them and paying attention to, you know, all the business of the town. It's, I'm not clear on what it is that's broken that you guys, I, I'm wondering what is broken that you guys are trying to fix? Because from our perspective, and I can, I mean, just, I'll say from, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but from my personal perspective, I've been on the school committee for six years, I think I've been on the budget subcommittee for the last maybe three years of that. I've had a lot of, I've spent a lot of time working on the school budget, and not as much as Ann Louise, but still a fair amount. And I feel like the process, and I can't believe I'm saying this, because I've, you know, had a lot of heated discussions with Dan Alfred and Ken Shada, but the process, I feel like, has been very constructive. They push back on us, we push back on them, we have a good dialogue. It's not broken, I don't think, from what I can tell. So I'm, I'm interested to know what it is that's broken that we're trying to fix.
I don't think anybody said it was broken. I said, we're, we're trying to make it more effective and coordinated than it is now.
I'd like to just share
We're also taking advantage of the fact that nothing's changed in forty years, and we're looking at what other towns are doing in terms of professionalizing their financial management of towns and the structural changes they make.
So I think, look, if in the world of professionalizing, we now have hired a town administrator that has legitimate and extensive financial experience, then you'll get a high five from all seven of us, and I think that's wonderful. I think it's almost undercutting everything we've done in this town to suggest that it's somehow not professional. So I'm going to move past that. I'd like to read something to you very quickly, and then Stacy, you can move on and do what you like. We asked our attorneys to take a look at the proposed changes to the bylaws to understand any potential issues that could be raised for the school committee. And there are a couple of things, especially as it relates to timing, process, et cetera. So one of the first things that he says is that there is a concern and a real downside for us to having the town administrator and the select board review and comment on the school committee's budget before it reaches the finance committee. Now, you've already raised a dialogue, raised potential concerns, looked at it in context to, you know, compare some of the things you're trying to achieve as a board with your departments. There is an inherent conflict in that. So again, my issue is with the pass-through and review by the select board. While I asked with the town administrator, but it is odd because he reports to the select board. And that has nothing to do with Mr. Ahern, as Lisa said. They go on to say, state law does not mandate any particular procedure for the budget review or submittal process. Rather, municipalities are left to develop their own procedures. So if the select board holds a public hearing on proposed budgets, and then the select and then the select board is required to transmit the budget approved by the school committee, with school committee recommendations thereon to the finance committee, at that point, you know, we're going to be in a position of defending our budget to you, especially if you're going to a town hearing on it, before we've had the chance to vet it with either the town administrator or the finance committee. So that is the concern as it relates to that. And then there's probably a concern around the timing, but it's a little hard to discern exactly how all this would flow in the calendar. So I will leave it at that. I think we've said enough. It's not that we are opposed to governance updates. I don't think this is an objection to engaging our new town administrator in a much more direct and meaningful way. We're already doing it. But, you know, those are concerns.
So there are other members that had some questions. Dawn?
A few minutes ago, Lisa just asked, what are the problems with the current system? And I think you said this would make it more effective. But I really need specific examples on what would make it more effective.
Well, basically, I mean, I've said it before. I mean, you would have a town administrator with financial management background, working with an experienced financial team, all full-time professionals responsible for the budget development. The finance committee would be basically a review and making recommendations to town meeting.
But don't we have that already as the people's voice, the elected finance committee? And I don't think anyone here would think that there wouldn't be an inherent conflict of interest if the school board looked over the select board's budget or the select board looked over our budget in terms of approval and management. But then why would someone who is appointed, hired, fired, evaluated by the select board, reviewing our budget, not have an inherent conflict of interest? You would agree that if we took on that role for the select board, that would be an inherent conflict of interest. And if the select board directly took it on for us, it would be an inherent conflict of interest. So why not the person hired, fired, evaluated, and appointed by the select board?
Well, first of all, there are, and Paul can talk much more about this. There are actually a few towns that have finance committees. And these towns seem to operate fairly efficiently with a process that's similar to what we're recommending. So this independent elected finance committee, you know, it's worked well. And it's certainly stepped in when that was important to be done over the last few years. But more towns are operating with a totally different structure.
Four towns or 15 towns?
No, well, Paul, you want to weigh in on the elected finance committee?
Well, specifically, I can't tell you how many towns have a process similar to ours. But it goes well beyond the 15 towns that we identified from a demographic standpoint as being similar to Holliston. What we're proposing is the predominant approach that is used in towns throughout the Commonwealth or some form of it.
Are you proposing appointing appointed members to the finance committee as well?
No, no, we're not. In fact, one of the concerns, I think, is that there isn't a documented or defined budget process in Holliston right now. I don't think you can show us a document that says this is how the budget is developed in Holliston or has been developed in Holliston over the last several years. It's still defined, if not undefined. So that, excuse me, Amberie, that's one thing we're trying to address is to provide a roadmap, a user's guide, if you will, for all of the people involved in the budget process for now and into the future. And we think that's critical because there have been probably in the last six or seven years, three different iterations of the budget process. And that's not a sustainable structure for the long term. So we're trying to provide what we believe is a sustainable structure going forward so that everyone understands their roles, understands their responsibilities, and has some form of guidance as they go through this process. Some of the feedback we've gotten from a number of towns who have a similar process is that it is critical to have it well-defined and documented for purposes of hiring financial professionals and town managers and town administrators in their respective towns.
So I think that makes perfect sense. The idea of codifying the process and documenting it, I would wholeheartedly support. I don't think it's misunderstood. I wasn't aware it's been changed three times because it feels like it's been exactly the same for nine years. But codifying, documenting, beautiful. No problem with that.
Okay, I didn't say it was misunderstood. I said it was ill or undefined.
So Andy and Catherine, Andy's on the budget subcommittee. Andy, I just want to offer you an opportunity for questions if you have any.
No, I don't have questions. My concern is that it was noted that there was nothing in particular wrong with the process as it was and that we just hadn't changed the process in 40 years. And my concern is that we have what I would consider to be a process that works pretty effectively for the school committee. And this feels very much like change for the sake of change and moving in a direction where we have perhaps someone with a whole lot less accountability taking a look at this rather than our finance committee. So my concern is that we're bypassing the existing process and moving to one where it certainly moves more power into the hands of the board of selectmen. So that's my concern. I don't have any questions, but just that is the concern I have. We don't need to change just because we feel the need to change.
Catherine?
So just want to piggyback on what Andy said before someone else responds. I asked, my question is sort of, is somewhat rhetorical, although I guess maybe not. Given that people said that this system isn't broken, is this a foregone conclusion? Is it possible that we won't change and we'll keep things the way they are? Are we still exploring or are we being told that things are changing?
Well, I mean, this is a recommendation from the governance committee that will be presented for the warrant for the May 10th town meeting. And it would be up to town meeting to decide whether to accept or not the recommendations of the governance committee.
So for people who are watching at home, this becomes really important for them to pay attention to in the coming months.
Yep, absolutely. Dawn, did you ask all your questions? Cynthia? You're good? Okay. Mr. Bude, Dr. Casca, Dr. Patello, you three are also a very important part of the budget process. Did you have any questions you wanted to share with the governance committee at this point?
I think from my perspective, the biggest thing would be the 80-day piece, that's all. And just because the further we are from finalizing our budget before town meeting, the less it's going to be honed down to a number. There's information such as utility rates and retirements and things like that that we would not have, you know, visibility into. As long as we're able to continue to hone that number down, we don't want to have an inflated budget. So that's the only thing that is my concern. Current process is one where we basically go right into April or time, so.
Governor?
The only thing I would say is I think that while there is a timeline in terms of when the select board has to submit its budget to the finance committee, I don't know that in the end, there is an opportunity to make adjustments before town meeting. I mean, I think that's sort of being done or has been done. And I don't know that it wouldn't continue.
Okay. Dr. Casca, did you have any questions?
No, I don't think so at this time. I understand where Keith is coming from because we often get a lot of late information based on retirements, resignations, there's a lot that happens closer to the end of the year. And that's why the more time we gain on that is helpful. Because I do understand where Keith's coming from. We would be really in the dark as we're just starting the school year in September and trying to come up with a budget that's accurate in that timeframe. It would be a challenge.
I'm going to say flat out, we can't do it because the single biggest sway factor is often related to special education, if you will. And those costs, to try to estimate those in the first half of the year, we don't do it and we don't do it for a reason. So, you know, trying to pull that together in the first half of the year, I think would be irresponsible. We do have a process, a very defined process, that we worked with the finance committee on so that we could get started, if you will, where we estimate our fixed costs and some other costs. We do it in a couple of increments typically. This year's been extremely unusual, but that will start. But the real earnest effort in compiling our own budget does not begin until January and there's good reason for it.
So I feel like we've had quite a bit of dialogue. And I am comfortable in that I think everyone has gotten a chance to share their questions or concerns. Scott, you mentioned that you are having a public hearing. Do you have the date for when that is?
I don't have it off the top of my head. Does anybody have the date? Did we decide on the date? I think it's the 20.
It's the 25th, but I don't think it's going to be our only public hearing. But we wanted to make at least sure that at least we had one public hearing before we had to submit what we recommended to the town administrator for the warrant.
Great. And are we allowed to go to that public hearing? I'm presuming yes, but I just.
Oh, yeah.
Please do.
Believe me, I'm not going to end this meeting by saying, no, you can't.
No, 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 no. I figured that. So thank you so much for joining us. You know, let's keep chatting and keep the conversation going. And as I shared with Sam, if he, you know, needed to get more clarification from us, you know, we're available. So thank you all so very much.
Well, on our part, thank you for your time and the questions. They've been very helpful and, you know, issues that we'll continue to take a look at in the time we have, see if we can make adjustments if necessary. But it is going to be a change in terms of your relationship with the finance committee and the town administrator. I think no matter how this comes out, but it's certainly a process that has worked very well in many other towns. And we'll go back to them again and understand a little bit more how they deal with their school budgets. But I think, you know, the flexibility that's been there before will probably continue to be there. The fact that it's, you know, the town administrator compiling the budget shouldn't make any difference with that. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. And I believe you still have your meeting that you'll be heading over to. So have a great meeting and we will see you soon.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to jump right into old business. Dr. Casca has, you know, two significant topics to discuss. It's going to take some time. So I'd like to have that conversation right now. We can approve meeting minutes, you know, at 10 o'clock and be fine with that. So Susan, I am going to bring it down to old business with Fall 2 Sports and your COVID update, which we're probably going to have to change that name to a new agenda item.
Yes, I think so. I think I'll start, I was going to move right into COVID updates, but I do want to start with Fall 2 Sports just because I think it's going to be very quickly discussed. We had met with our team, which included the health director, Chief Cassidy, our emergency management director, nurse leader, and our high school administration and talked about whether there are still concerns related to spectators at our indoor sports. We had already agreed that we would continue the two adult family member spectators for outdoor sports. And since that time, we've had a lot of good progress in our numbers at the town level, at the state level. This is now going to be week eight, I believe it is, in yellow. And the school numbers have been really, really weak, really low as far as any school transmission or any large numbers of cases. So really, everything's going into a positive trend, which is why the state is mandating that we reopen fully in-person for K-5 and 6 to 8 by, K-5 by April 5th and 6 to 8 by April 28th. So that's all good news. It starts getting me to the point of if it's safe to have our students back at three feet, we may want to really think about our spectator policy again, our protocol more. It's not really a policy, but a protocol. We are recommending, and it doesn't need to be voted on because we are in yellow. It would be a vote potentially if we were in red again. But we are recommending as a team that we do allow Fall 2 to have spectators in indoor sports as well, which would be the same for the outside, two adult family members would be able to attend. Now, even though we are optimistic about how that would work, I did ask Mr. Bude to work with Mr. Baker to talk about how we would implement that because we don't want to go backwards in progress, given our good, you know, our good progress in working and mitigating at the school level. So Keith, you did share a document with the school committee that kind of outlined that. And Mr. Baker could share that out to parents in his communication related to sports. So I don't know that you need to read all of it, but could you kind of sum up some of the key points so parents are aware of that? Because this is really exciting that we could start to bring some of our parents to indoor sports as well.
Containing your packet are the, all the things, as all the recommendations of Susan mentioned. Just simply, I broke it down into three sections, one pregame. And basically, you have to preregister like you did for the outside sports in the fall. We're allowing, again, two adult attendees or fans for each event. Masks have to be worn at all times. It has to be a mask that's part of school policy mask, so it's no gators. We're going to be setting up two chairs, two folding chairs, six feet apart in all directions. We're going to number the chairs so people will be assigned a seat so that for contact tracing purposes, we'll be able to find out who they are or inform them of a situation. There's one, you're going to be entering from the rear of the field house, exiting through the rear of the field house so that, again, we're keeping the students from both teams separated from the parents. You know, we're not going to have people allowed, they're not going to be allowed to yell just again about the aerosolized drop. So we're going to, you know, during the match itself, you won't be able to do that. The bathrooms unfortunately will not be available for the attendees. So please, you know, plan ahead. And then after the games, again, the fans will not be able to, you know, have a meeting or whatever with their children till they're outside, till it's outside after the event. So again, the students, the players, the competitors, the athletes from both teams will be able to, again, keep themselves protected in the fashion which we are a part of as well. And we'd go from there. The field house itself will be sanitized after however many games or matches there are and for the next day of school. It'll either be done that evening, depending on what time it gets done, or first thing in the morning before students arrive. So if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them. Any, you know, things you don't think I covered or things I've gone overboard on, so.
No, I think that's, Keith, I think this is just good news for so many people. And I think it just brings yet another layer of normal back to people. So I'm happy about that. And I, you know, spectators. So I, I'm, I'm happy about that and I, you know, spectators have attended games and, and it has been, seems to not increase spread. So I'm excited for our high school students. I think this is, I think it's a good call where, where, where we are with our numbers, et cetera. A little off topic, but similar topic is that if, if we are doing this, then as a school committee, we really need to consider, and I strongly recommend that we start meeting in person as well. Not if people aren't comfortable with every subcommittee meeting. I get that, but I think as our full open session meetings, I think we should start meeting in person for sure. I just think if the schools are opening, then we should start to also go back to normal. So we need to really think about that. And so thank you, Keith, for that with you and Matt working through all that. From here, is there any school committee policy that needs to be updated based on this maybe?
I don't think so because when, when it was a, when a town was in the red, then it was a requirement to have these discussions and vote. But when there's not a safety concern and a town is in the yellow, you're allowed to update those protocols as needed and not, doesn't have to go through a policy change.
Okay, great.
Good. Questions from the committee? Sin.
Can we just change it to spectators? That's all I was asking. Instead of saying fans.
Spectators, right. The adult, two adult family members as spectators. And Keith, can you make sure that Mr. Baker is able to get that out in a communication to athletes tomorrow? Because I really want to make sure that the next game we get this, well, it's going to be early next week. We should be able to get this going. I know that some teams have reached out to me and I really want to make sure that they do get this opportunity to do it, especially their seniors as well.
Great. That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? No?
Okay, the next change, I mean, this is all, you know, it's all trending towards good news lately. So this is exciting. The website was updated tonight, our dashboard, not our dashboard, but our actual information. We share out through the nurses, keep updating their close contact information and travel information. So just hours ago, the governor did change the travel order to a travel advisory, which means people, if they're not, if they're traveling in just the daytime, they don't have to do anything. They still recommend getting PCR tested within the 72 hours, but it's not a mandate anymore. It's an advisory. And therefore we don't have to capture that information from families. It gives them a little bit of flexibility. And the nurses, again, have updated our website to reflect some of the changes related to the travel advisory now versus order. The second piece that we've changed related to close contacts, and this was a change that happens with DPH and I believe CDC as well. Not, I'd say weeks back at the state level. We did not adjust our change. We really wanted to be cautious until we started seeing the positive trends with our staying in the yellow and hopefully getting to green at some point. But the change in the policy at the state level was that students or close contacts have to be out of school for 10 days. So they can test after day five, and if they get a negative, come back on 10 days. At the state level, it had changed to if you were identified as a close contact, after five days, you get a PCR test. And if by day seven, you have a negative result, you can return on day eight. So our nurses are reflecting that policy, I mean, that protocol, it's a protocol change in our records as well. Because again, we have not seen transmission in school. We have not seen our close contacts we've identified at school becoming, or becoming positive. We have seen some close contacts related to family contact positive. So the family changes wouldn't necessarily take place, but as far as the close contacts we identify at school, we would be able to bring them back by day eight.
Susan, are you going to send out a, a new chart that shows people what, you know, what to do if, like the nurses had sent out originally so they can have that clear? Because I like print it and I like put it on my, my door.
So yeah, once they updated the documents, I think yesterday it actually was on the website already because it's already been linked. But I had Lynn crafted something and Dan McLeod sent it out tonight.
Oh, great. Thank you. Email to some point. I have not checked that yet. Thanks.
No, well, we're all probably backlogged in emails and, you know. So these, again, all, all, it's all supporting why we need to reopen schools fully this spring. And we've had progress with our state mandate of getting grades four and five back in addition to our K to three students for April 5th. So I wanted to talk to you about that a little bit tonight. You probably saw what went out to parents last night related to K to five and six to eight. There's still challenges in getting all of our students back, but we can do so safely. The additional challenge that we have is that we have our Placentino students in Montessori six to eight have been housed at Rams because we've had them back, as you know, at six feet since September 16th. And now they need to rejoin their Placentino family. I have to say, I was very happy today when I visited both Miller. I had some chance to go to Miller a little bit today and I was also saw the Placentino, Montessori students over at Rams. And I just, my timing was great because they had just had class meetings to discuss that they're going to return to their family at Placentino. And the kids were so excited. They, especially the second graders, just the thought of being able to go back because this is their last time to be at Placentino for the rest of the year. So I don't often get to get, hear about the fun things that are going on. So it was really, like my timing was really good and they, they were just discussing it. And they were, they knew who I was, some of them, and some of them said, oh, you're the superintendent that's helping us go back to Placentino. So it was a highlight of my morning. I then went up and visited some of our Rams middle school students and maybe not as much exuberance there. Some of the students do like the hybrid model, but there were some that also were enthusiastic about coming back, depending on what grade level that we were in. I bet you can guess the younger ones would be a little bit more favorable and some of our eighth graders maybe not so much. But either way, this is all good news and many teachers stopped me to just say how excited they are to be back five days a week with their students. So this is exciting. So the dates for those were sent out. Now, we have, we were able to meet with high school administration. We had a small meeting and we met with some of our, a small group of HFT educators from the high school because what we've tried to do is have some collaborative discussions about how this would happen to bring students back. So because K to eight is a mandate, and even though the mandate was for April 5th for the little ones and, and then April 28th for six to eight, we did agree together that we can do it by April 26th for grades six to eight. But I know I've already had many, many emails as to why, Dr. Cuska, have you not talked about high school? And there's a reason for that. The reason is that the state has not mandated high school returning. They are indicating that it's going to happen in April. Well, April 28th is the end of April. So I don't know how they would come back April. It might be early May. However, we had discussions that even though we haven't been mandated yet, it does make sense to bring back our high school students at the same time as our middle school students. So I will be sharing that information out to parents, but I wanted to tell you this here. We are able to plan for April 26th for all secondary students to have the opportunity to come back five days a week in person. Again, lots of challenges logistically, but we can do it and our teachers are supporting this. And we are all excited to try to welcome them back together. Some of the challenges, why don't we pause there for a minute?
Yeah. Could you for a minute, first of all, thank you for not waiting for the high school to be mandated. Thank you, God, like that.
Thank you.
And I don't have a high school child, but I am just more, you know, for all of my friends' kids who are in the high school, like this. Yes, if the middle school can go, whatever you need us to do to help support you, we will. So thank you for that. I, I really appreciate that.
Yes, so we will, we will need volunteers. I'll tell you about that in a minute, some volunteers we might need.
Well, I am a volunteer. I second what Stacy said. It's, you know, a travesty that in the process all along, the state actually, I feel, has kind of not totally, totally done justice by our high schools. So thank you for making them a priority. Thank you for getting them back at the same time as the other, as the other kids. That really is huge. It's huge for them, especially the seniors who have less time to be in the building.
I agree, and that's why it's so important.
One small thing, like last year, my daughter said to me, I only wish I had known my last day at high school was going to be March 12th. And her response was, it wasn't even the friends. She wanted to say goodbye to her teachers. And our kids need the chance to see their teachers in person and really do that.
I agree. Can I just also say, like, just seeing how Elisa's response to being able to sing in person, that, that alone, I mean, that, that just gives you an indication how much they want to be back. They really do want to be back and I do have a senior soul, but it doesn't matter. I just want all the kids to get back as soon as they can. So thank you for doing that, Susan. I really appreciate that.
Well, it, you know, I'm going to go back. It takes a village. This is not me doing it. This is the team doing it. It's the high school teachers that with their willingness, they want what's best for kids. They know it's going to be challenging if they have more students. Right now, it's, it's a 50 50 split, but somewhat a 50 50 split on cohort A and B. Half might be in and half might be streaming in, and that comes with challenges. But right now, when we change, we're thinking we should have that many more students back. So you might end up having the majority of your kids in person in a very small group remote. And that means it's hard to give as much attention to the remote. So I really strongly encourage families to consider bringing your children back in person, even if you've been remote all year, because they are very likely going to be fully in person in the fall. And this is a very good time to help them take off some of the, you know, anxiety that they've been dealing with, allow them time to connect in person with adjustment counselors and counselors at the high school. So that fall will not be as jarring for those kids that have been fully remote for the year. I strongly encourage every child that can come back, you know, we will find a way to get them in safely somewhere between three and four feet of distance in the classroom. And, you know, again, still a lot of things to work out, but we can do this. So one of the things that I do need to discuss, I do want to ask for a vote on is because as I mentioned, the Ramtino children coming back to Placentino, they will have their whole rooms being moved. So these teachers have, have, have brought all of their supplies over to the middle school and are spread into two classrooms over there. They're now going to be taking those two classrooms of materials and returning to one classroom at Placentino, which means teachers at Placentino who are in two rooms are going to have to move a lot of their supplies into one room. We may have some excess rooms to be able to spread kids out for lunch purposes and things, but there are going to be some classrooms that will only have access to one room. And that's going to require a lot of logistical challenges. So because we have to move all of this, all of the extra desks and furniture and materials, and to do that in a timely manner in order to have everybody in place at Placentino and Miller, we now have the challenge of a holiday weekend. We have Good Friday, Easter, and then they're back on that Monday, the 5th. So in order to do this and also allow children to be in class Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday in their current situations, we then have to move everything on March 31st. So after school, well into the evening and as late as possible. And then the next morning, we are still going to be struggling at particularly Placentino because of all the moves that we have to make. At Miller, it will not be quite as challenging because a number of those classes have, the desks are already in there because the cohort A and B, even though they're not in person together, their, their desks are in there. There will be some rooms that do have to be condensed to make sure we get all the kids back in person. But again, not as many rooms and not as many logistical moves without having, they don't have kids in another building. That's where our real challenge is. So I tried to come up with what might work the least, what we, the least impactful for students. And what I would like to ask is that we consider doing a half day at both schools on April 1st in order to allow teachers to have time before the holiday weekend in the afternoon to pull their materials together. We are bringing back music, art, hopefully science and all the specials to students that haven't had it all year. So this is really exciting for kids. But the teacher's supplies have been all locked away in closets and storage. So they have a lot of materials to pull together in a short amount of time. And the classroom teachers are going to have these shifts in their classroom. So a half day would allow them some time, but even more than that, Placentino is going to have the additional challenges. So I'd like to propose considering a half day synchronous remote for students at Placentino, which is not ideal, but would still allow a half day of live instruction for students. And then the second half of the day, teachers would have to be in their rooms to work on things. And at Miller, I would like to propose, since there are less moves to make, a half day in person for students. And then the second half of the day, teachers would have time to be in their rooms.
So, it's, sorry, I didn't see you.
No, it's, I just wanted to ask, what is the current last day of school?
The 23rd of June, is it? I think it's still the 23rd, yes.
23rd? Okay. Would this change that? Half days don't change that, right?
No.
Okay. So the, so the last day of school would be June 23rd regardless. Okay.
Yes. And that's why if we didn't have school for just K to eight, then we'd have to make up that day, I mean, K to five. We would have to make up the day somehow. And that wouldn't work well.
Okay. That's my question.
And Louise?
Um, I guess my question was similar. I mean, first of all, I know it's a ton of effort. This is like the first day of school and usually they come in a day or two before, like moving all the classrooms and everything. So it is exhausting and a big effort. So thank you to all the teachers willing to do that. So they only need a half a day to do this? I guess that was my question. Like, I don't care. We've had no snow days, one snow day. For me, if the calendar gets pushed one day, it's not the end of the world to accommodate this.
I hear what you're saying, but that we have no impact on middle school and high school. So we would truly be driving the middle school and high school schedule and that pushes on our seniors, losing a day.
Yeah, I don't want to push them if we don't have to. So if the half, if the half day solves that, super.
I can tell you what some other districts are doing and I was asked to consider. Some of the districts that have had asynchronous learning, at least half a day on Wednesday or Friday all year long, when we had synchronous learning five days a week and we've been so proud of that. Some of those districts are making a full asynchronous day to do what we're doing. I didn't want to do that because I felt like we have not done asynchronous all year long. So to do that now would put a burden on the teachers, have to still produce all that work. They haven't had to do full asynchronous. So it didn't seem like it would be authentic learning for kids, given the model we've had. But I could support a half day and feel like we're getting education into children's hands and also supporting teachers. So I think, oh, your counsel.
I just wanted to ask about the, like, physical moving of the boxes. Like, is there, I mean, you know, boxes, whatever, you know, easels, whatever it is that needs to be moved. Who's going to move all that? Like a single?
We are, we are all.
I'm just wondering about the, I know we haven't allowed there to be volunteers in the schools, but I wonder if there could be an exception made for heavy lifting that's happening.
Yes. Right. Because we would be looking for that type of help more after school on Wednesday, the 31st. So that would be considered fine. We can still do our cleaning that we do later in the night. And then in the morning, more like we wouldn't want, we wouldn't want additional volunteers that are not part of our team. So in the morning, it more likely would be people that are already working in the buildings trying to help support. Like, of course, I know Dr. Vitello, Mr. Bade, myself will be wearing jeans that day. So if we are, if we're late to our school committee meeting that night, you'll understand.
Are there any other opportunities? Could you use middle and high school students to help after school that week before? I just.
Yeah, I was going to suggest when I need people to pick things up and put them down, I reach out to the athletic teams and I get a lot of response. They are so awesome. And if you reach out to Matt Baker, he can, or the coaches, the kids are always willing to help. You always get a good crew of them.
Yes, Keith can follow up on that and see if we could get, again, I really still would want to try to keep them in the building only after school, even just to not add more, you know, we're trying to keep things as safe as possible still. So we want to, if it was on the 31st, that would probably be best if we could do something like that.
Susan, go ahead.
I just was wondering whether if we have a school committee meeting that night, can we like move it? So that we do it another week or is that going to infringe upon school vacation or can we do it on either end of school vacation?
I thought, I thought about that as well, but Keith was reminding me of the, just the budget cycle and getting things posted.
The darn budget cycle.
No, no, it's a public budget hearing. It's not, it's not, it's just that, you know, we have to then post another two weeks hence and things like that. So there's a, you know, there's certain requirements that the school committee has statutorily. There, it's not like what we like to do is by law, you have to have a public, public budget, a public budget hearing. And that has to be advertised for two weeks. So again, we'd have to start two weeks from today on that cycle or tomorrow.
Okay.
So we, we couldn't move to Monday or Tuesday of that week?
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
No, it has to be advertised. No, you have to advertise it. So it has to be. No, it has to be advertised. No, you have to advertise it, so it has to be two weeks from tomorrow. Actually, whenever, I should say two, we can publicize it in the local paper.
So if we push it a different night, would that work?
That's what I'm saying. Like, if we moved it to, like, the fifth or the sixth.
No, that, you're not going to get two weeks in, though, I don't think.
Yeah, we are. It's after the first. That's after the first. You said our public hearing is on the first. Is that right?
Yeah.
So if we moved it to the fifth, that's farther out, not sooner.
No, I know. I'm just saying, um...
No? Okay. I'm not trying to cause problems. I'm trying to...
I, I may say the eighth, just, again, it's got to be two weeks from the point it gets into the local publication.
Right, so why don't we move our April first meeting to April eighth?
Eighth instead.
We have already advertised it in our newsletter, for what it's worth. But, I mean, how else do people get that information if they're not getting it from the newsletter?
What are we, uh?
It's on the town. It gets posted on the town website, too.
Yeah, it goes up.
I know, we get so hundreds and scores and scores of people that come to the public hearing, so.
I would, well, now, though, if it's...
I would, I would love it if they wanted to come on to, to the meeting.
So a day off in, in the posting, is that it?
No, it has to be, it has to be two weeks.
No, I know it has to be two weeks, but if we posted, what were you saying, Monday?
No, I'm saying, it's not, it's not posting with the town. It has to be posted in a, in some sort of publication.
Yeah, so...
I'm not sure if we contact the Metro West Daily News on Friday, what the next date is going to be.
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay.
It's not, it's not that day. You know, it's not, that's, that's the problem. I don't know what their cycle is. I'll be honest.
It's like once a month or something.
No, 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 no. It's daily.
Okay.
Okay, but can we all save April eighth for a school committee meeting?
Yes.
Because I would much rather you not be working your tails off and then sit through school committee. Like, so I would prefer that you try and move school committee to April eighth. We will make ourselves available. Okay?
Thank you.
So Keith, can you check into that and see if that would work with the timeline?
Okay, I mean, I'll, we'll contact them.
Keith's not happy with me.
No, we'll, we'll contact them tomorrow and see what the next posting date is.
Thank you. Okay, so everyone pencil in April eighth, just as in a fire.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry for the, um, so Susan, you're asking if we would vote to have on April first, which is the Thursday, a half day synchronous remote for pre-K to grade two?
I don't think you, I don't think you have to vote on whether it's synchronous or in person, just a half day. Only because that's on the, that's not currently on the calendar, so it'd be an alteration of calendar. So if you approve a K to, K to five half day on April first, I can then let parents know that it'll be synchronous remote for little ones, and then the other ones would be in person, the three to five.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve April first as a half day for our pre-K through five students?
Moved by Cynthia?
Seconded by Ann Louise.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Ann Louise. Roll call vote. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevnic?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Manstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, one thing I did forget to mention when I talked about high school, similarly to what we talked about and the information you saw go out related to the younger students having to revert back to the full schedule to meet time on learning. We would do the same at high school. It's a combination of needing to meet the five point five structured learning time hours, but also getting lunch and trap, uh, passing time in the hallways and also meet our bus schedule. So it, we're going to tweak it a little bit this year from the actual schedule it would have been if it was pre-COVID. So the high school schedule will end up being eight, ten AM to two thirty-three as of, um, and it actually will start, Keith won't it, start a little earlier than the April twenty-sixth? We're going to have to make an adjustment April fifth and April twelfth weeks as well. But more information will go out on that because it's, it's more about as the buses change to meet pre-K to five changes, we'll need to make an adjustment on the schedule at the high school for those two weeks prior to them going full in, and then it will be eight, ten to two thirty-three. Lot of moving parts that overlap each other. So I don't know if you have any questions about some of the things I sent out, rather than go through all of the things at bullet points, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that might be.
Can you give us sort of next steps as to what parents can expect to get via email for information? Um, because I think that's the, you know, people are like, I, I think all the logistics in their mind, too. So can you give us a preview of when you expect parents to receive what and from whom?
Sure, so yesterday, um, the information went out from me to the parents, but I did not want to send the links because each school needs to gather their own information about who's coming back from remote or who might be going from in person to, to remote. Again, we're hopeful that more students are going to come back. We, as a district, we were at about twenty, about twenty percent of our students have been remote all year as a district. So we'd like to see more students coming back full in person, and hopefully ten or fifteen percent or even less students be remote so that we can, again, prepare them for what's going to be coming in the future and start to help with the SEL and academic needs. So the form went out from Placentino Miller, asking anyone that needs to adjust a change. This is similar to what we've done at other terms. Each term, we've asked them to let us know if they're changing their current model. So students in Placentino, K to three, have already had the opportunity to be full in person all year. So now it's anyone that is currently remote that wants to join full in person has to let us know by Monday. And that way, Dr. Slaney can plan for some of these changes with Ms. Lassie. Because, again, lots of changes, because now we also have to move rooms and classes and make sure we have enough space for additional students that might come back for April fifth. At Miller, similarly, they sent out a form to parents asking for the same information. So right now, because our hybrid model will no longer exist, and that's per the state mandate, it cannot count for time on learning effective April fifth for grades four and five, uh, grades K to five. So that group of students that are currently hybrid, if they are planning on staying full, they're going to go full in person automatically if we hear nothing from them. So they do not need to notify Mr. Khan if they're going from hybrid to in person, because that's an automatic switch. They only need to notify us if they're going from full remote to full in person for April fifth, or they need to notice if they're going from currently hybrid or full in person to full remote. So that's a very small number of people that have to respond to that survey. I will say, because we've done such unique schedules at every grade level, there's no one size fits all way for me to communicate that information. So parents have had a lot of questions, and they're reaching out to teachers, but teachers don't have the answers yet. Until we can collect the data, we cannot determine all the impact of some of these changes. So as I mentioned in my communication, we're hoping to change as few students from classrooms and staying with their teachers. We want to keep as many kids in front of the teachers they've had all year. However, if we get a lot of kids switching from remote to in person, which is a great thing, they may not have the same teacher, because that teacher may not be able to accommodate them in that classroom if it's already full. So there's a lot of logistics that have to take place, and the same for some of our students that are staying remote. Right now, they might be streaming into a class that has hybrid. And again, if there are too many students in that class, and most of them are in person, then we have this small subgroup of remote, we may have to combine some kids going to remote, and that could require a teacher change. But if, if at all possible, we won't do that. I just can't be sure until we get the numbers back. And these, the principals are working crazy hours already, because this is something we usually do all summer long, make adjustments and schedule changes. They're recreating a whole schedule, redesigning what UA schedules will look like, because now we're trying to also implement our specialists that have not happened all year. So there's so many moving parts there, and then also account for kids that might be shifting in person or into remote and make those shifts into what teachers they would have. So it's very tricky, and it's not a perfect science, so I can't answer each parent about how that would work. But we are encouraging them to obviously reach out to the principal if they can get a specific question answered. And if a change has been made, I've asked the principals to try to do that through a phone call to parents, because they really deserve a chance to decide. Maybe if I find out that my child can no longer have the same teacher if I stay remote, maybe they would then opt in. You know, not trying to force people to make changes, but they will have to weigh those decisions about what might be more important at that point, um, if they want to keep that connection with the same teacher. So it should be not a lot of changes, but it's just, you know, it's hard to say until we get all of those solid numbers. And that's the reason for trying to get those forms filled out quickly. Lisa?
I know this is early still, but, um, what about, um, the high school kids and snacking or eating lunch?
Right, so a lot, I will tell you, a lot of high schools, because, you know, you're talking about a large body of students, a lot of high schools have opted not to serve lunch. So their students, and I saw this, there's a lot of outrage in my local town because the kids are coming back and they're going to be doing five and a half hours and having a snack. That's not enough for some of our high school students to get through that many hours with just a snack. So it is going to be tricky, but Nicole Bottomley does feel that they can accomplish this and accomplish it safely. We'll use our cafeteria, maybe some other large spaces. Some of our students are using some of the tables outside of the auditorium. There's some small stations there, and also outside spaces to serve lunch if necessary. So there is a...
It'll be lunch, conscious of snack.
It will be lunch, and that, so that means having three lunches to spread kids out. We also have some senior privileges, as you know. They are allowed to leave campus for lunch. And there is some talk about maybe, um, grade eleven students could have that privilege as well for the rest of the year. So then we have less students on campus for lunch purposes. And these are, just because those are the kids that are able to drive themselves for that short privileged time. It's about eight weeks of privilege. So that information will go out very soon, but that is what Dr. Bot, uh, Nicole Bottomley is leaning towards, but she still has to flush out all these details. Dawn?
Just to clarify, the at lunch is six feet. Is that correct?
Correct. It's still at six feet for all grade levels, and that is why we need that additional space, um, for the, and it will require the additional lunch blocks as well.
Thank you. Ann Louise?
I know there was some discussion. I'm totally not trying to stir pot. It was just a question of looking into, um, some tents for outdoors. And I, you know, the downsides of this, too. So where, where have you come out on that? Sort of not considered it because of the weather, or it's just impossible to get them?
No, actually, good news on that, Keith. Would you like to share? Unless you haven't finalized it yet, I don't put you on the spot, but...
I finalized the Woodland Street campuses. Um, every school's getting about twenty-four hundred square feet of tents that can weather and stuff like that. We rented them. They're going in one place, and they're not moving.
They're good.
They're not portable in any way, shape, or form. So that's done. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm still in the process of working through the high school. I've got a couple, a couple of leads there. I'm just trying to balance out one larger tent versus like three smaller ones, because if we want to use it as educational space as well, three smaller ones makes more sense than one larger one. For lunch, maybe one larger one does because it's more centralized. So we're just, I'm working through that right now, but we'll be okay, I think, so.
But Keith, you, you did have other tents previously, but we, a couple of them busted, is that right?
We had some weather issues. A couple of freak storms came through. And, you know, the, watching them go down on camera was an interesting way to use the security cameras. But, um, yes, they, they did not survive the storm.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Yeah. I told you something was gonna happen.
It's the issue, I mean, you, you want to buy them because you want to do it once and not have to rent them, but when you don't have the staff to take them up and down, and truthfully, one of the storms came after hours. And, you know, I don't have any staff here, or necessarily not enough staff here at night to go run out and start disassembling a tent that takes about an hour to put up and about forty-five minutes to take down. So, um, you know, when there's a little cell coming through, so.
So would we have, once those tents are up, um, I mean, kids will throw their coat down and sit on the ground if they want, but do we have tables or how, what are we putting inside them so that they can be useful for either class purposes or lunch or whatever?
For class purposes, we purchased eight hundred chairs for the district, um, uh, back last fall. So the high school does have two hundred folding chairs to use for that purpose. It's a, it's the exact same chair that we actually rent for graduation.
That's true.
Um, tables would not be an affordable process. Nicole's purchased a number of, I think it's a dozen or so, of picnic benches. But again, the, the, the chairs certainly would facilitate outside learning. The picnic benches will help with, um, you know, with lunch periods, or even just sitting in a chair on the grass or, um, you know, last... You, you'll see after school, a number of children will hang out, um, you know, in the parking lot and eat out there with whatever they brought. So it's, we're, we're going to be flexible. There's the bleachers. There's, there's certainly plenty of places to go, so.
I, I will say, I happened to be in the classroom when the, when the students were actually making those wooden picnic tables, and we had some conversations about why they weren't level, and they had some challenges. And we, they were laughing with me because they had to level some of the, um, pudding was on those. So I thought that was nice to see that they're actually making some of the things that they'll be using outside as well.
Oh, that's cool.
Unfortunately, as they were getting them leveled, they're now appropriate for Placentino children, but what the heck, you know, so.
Making lemon rang pie out of lemons.
One thing I want to really point out, and parents, I, I did put it into my communication, but I know that people are going to miss this. So once hybrid no longer exists, it means students that are in person have to be in person five days a week. They cannot self-select. We've had some self-selecting on a day when maybe weather wasn't great, and at certain grade levels, students just didn't want to come physically in on a certain day. And we could get away with that, even though I wasn't really happy about it, as I wanted them in person the three days or five days out of the ten. But we could get away with it, and because that, um, remote time would count. It will not count for students who are full in person. They have to be physically in person. So that means if I don't feel like coming to school that day, it's not an option to just remote in if it's my in-person days. And they would be marked absent for that. So I think parents really need to understand that, that there's not this, you know, and, and we need them to be physically in person because they need to get more of that authentic education and, again, have opportunities to meet in person with some of the counselors to help work on some of these SEL things. So I just want to make sure, and high school is the little bit of that ambiguous time when students start to be, become more independent, and I hope they understand that they cannot just, um, decide not to remote, or decide to remote in on a day, because now Monday to Friday, they need to be physically there.
So Susan, will there be new quarantining protocols in terms of what a student, does a student remote in if they have to quarantine? And I understand if you don't have all the details, but I know that's a big, um, topic on people's minds.
Yes, that was on one of the bullet points. But again, there was a lot, I, I don't like sending out that much information, but I also wanted people to try to understand what they were maybe choosing if they do one or the other. So that is one of the things that the commissioner said, that if someone has to quarantine or isolate, then they could remote in. So in those cases, a student could temporarily remote into class and still get counted, even if they're an in-person student. And similarly, if a, if a parent opts out, because right now, we're not opting for remote. We're actually opting out of in-person, because the hope is that every child come back in person. So you're opting out of in-person to be remote, fully remote. And then those students could stream in, and those hours will count as long as we're meeting the five point five instructional hours for secondary and the five, five hours instructional, um, at the lower levels.
Great. Any other questions from the committee? Okay. Excellent. Keith, thank you for getting those tents.
There's still a couple more to go, so.
All right, um...
I told you somebody would ask.
Let's pivot to FY twenty-one budget discussion. Actually, it's FY twenty-two, not FY twenty-one. Trying to keep up with the times. Okay, um, so Ann Louise?
So, gosh, where do I start with this? We were initially hoping to go through this in detail tonight and vote on it. And, um, some more questions came up about where we stand on, on some details. So we're gonna set up some time, I think, next week to vote a final number that we can present to the finance committee on Tuesday evening. And when I say vote a final number, I mean, we, we need to at least agree as a committee, vote on a number that we want to bring to them, um, recognizing that through the, um, process of discussing that and presenting our rationale and trying to understand it, and also look at where the town is, that there probably will be some back and forth to... Recognizing that through the um, process of uh, discussing that and presenting our rationale and trying to understand it and also look at where the town is, that there probably will be some back and forth to um, get to a final number that we can then bring to um, town meeting. So there, there's probably a few more public discussions um, around this and, and we'll let everybody know when. We'll put it in the newsletter. An important date is the public hearing. So Stacy, you have the calendar in front of you. What is the date for that?
So it's the first, but we're hoping that Keith, April first, but we're hoping that Keith can move it to the eighth.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get back to. Thanks. I couldn't remember the eighth. So um, so currently that's getting pushed out to the eighth. So the two key calendar dates, then um, if you're following the, the brilliant budget story, would be first to see on um, Tuesday evening, what we present to the finance committee and that presentation will be made public and put up on our website. And then, and um, there may be a subsequent meeting after that, but certainly on the eighth, there will be um, a public hearing if you're interested in attending. And that'll be via Zoom. At this point anyways. So we'll post the links.
Did you have any other question, uh, any questions from the committee?
Crickets out there. Oh, yay.
Um, I'm sorry, I, I spaced out for a second. Did you say that you were going to send that grid to us that you were coming up with in terms of the budget? You know, drivers, et cetera, your, whatever, your normal presentation that you did. Did you already send? I didn't see it in my emails. I just didn't know what you were sending.
What I'm going to send, well, sort of, um, it probably won't go into gory detail, but it will have the, all of the, it'll have a summary of the proposed needs.
Okay.
Et cetera. So yes, you will have that and then it'll be public too.
Okay.
Hopefully I'll get it out before Tuesday.
Okay.
Any other questions from the committee? Okay, thank you. And so I'm going to back up a step to reports from subcommittees. Um, anything from communications?
No, we had a, I, I had asked to put that on the agenda, but I don't think we did. And this is a really long meeting, so I'm not going to belabor the point. Um, but we uh, wanted to follow up on that one communication item that I mentioned last week. But we can do it. I'll talk to you offline, Stacy. We can hopefully get it on the, on an upcoming agenda.
Okay. Policy?
Um, I don't have any policy items for tonight, but I just wanted to remind the community that we have our next meeting on April thirteenth at eleven thirty. We'll be doing that via Zoom. And that's it.
And then Andy is um, probably attending to family. Anyone on the, oh, Andy.
I had to step away for a minute.
That's okay. Um, any update on the superintendent evaluation?
Uh, we spoke earlier this week as a group um, and have decided to push back the timeline somewhat. So still going to finalize some of those dates with Dr. Cuska, but um, I think recognizing the um, the gigantic task which we've been talking about today of getting our schools open is um, without a doubt, the immediate priority. So um, most likely the timeline is going to look like um, us gathering information, doing some writing process in May and moving on toward um, a June for the presentation of the uh, of the evaluation. So I will, at our next meeting, have um, some more finalized dates for us.
Great. Thank you. Okay, um, and meeting minutes. So I, I believe there was another typo on the agenda. So we have meeting minutes from February eleventh. We have February eleventh regular or regular open session minutes. And then we have, that was a long one. Then we have February twenty-fifth regular session minutes. And then February twenty-fifth executive session. So February eleventh, are there any questions, comments, changes to the meeting minutes um, from February eleventh? Is there a motion to approve the February eleventh, twenty-twenty-one regular session?
Moved by Dawn?
Seconded by Andy.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Andy. Roll call, vote. Um, Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Handstad?
Is that a yes?
That's a yes. Sorry, I didn't know it was.
Mrs. Raffi, yes, thank you. Um, February twenty-fifth regular session meeting minutes. Any questions, comments, changes? No? Is there a motion to approve um, February twenty-fifth regular session meeting minutes?
Oh, regular session.
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Catherine.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Catherine. Roll call, vote. Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Handstad?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffi, yes. February twenty-fifth executive session minutes, um. You know what? I forgot we were changing our process on executive session minutes. They're being approved in executive session and retained until they are.
Yeah.
So never mind, we are not, those minutes, I will move that to a different executive session. Okay, great. There is no newsletter for this evening, correct, Lisa?
Um, correct. Although, do we have to vote? Uh, we're sending out, you know, the statement that I have not yet read as a newsletter. Do we have to vote on that?
Um, well,
We've already voted on.
We'll make a motion, we'll make a motion to put it into the newsletter. That's what we will do.
Okay. So I moved to present the um, statement that I'm going to read later in this meeting um, as our newsletter. And I did notice the typo, so um, you know, including non-substantive changes.
Yep.
Please.
Seconded by Dawn.
The move by Lisa, seconded by Dawn. Roll call, vote. Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Ms. Handstad? Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms., um, sorry, Mrs. Lestevnik?
Yes.
And Mrs. Raffi, yes. Great, thank you. Um, there are some items in your packet. Um, there are minutes of policy, subcommittee meeting of February ninth, twenty-twenty-one and February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Um, and I am going to jump back into um, oral communications. Um, Susan, you shared a lot tonight. Was there anything else you wanted to uh, comment on for open comment?
No, honestly, I think we covered a lot and people probably overwhelmed everything.
Thank you. Dr. Batello?
I'm good for tonight. Thank you.
Um, can I ask you a question and totally put you on the spot? Do, what are the topics for Friday's um, PD day?
We're um, continuing with uh, work on bias, uh, especially looking at the seven forms of bias and how we look at our schools and curriculum. Um, also some more elementary literacy work uh, at the uh, elementary level. And then the high school, uh, middle school, also looking at how instruction is going to need to shift as they move to, you know, this full in-person and different uh, numbers of kids remote uh, live within person. So those are the main topics.
And that is actually tomorrow, correct?
Yep, that is.
Friday, March nineteenth. So families, there's a half day. So hope you knew that because um, some of us may have forgotten. So half a day tomorrow, Friday, March nineteenth. Thank you, Dr. Batello. Uh, Keith, do you have anything? Okay, great. Thank you. And committee, okay. Uh, Catherine?
I do not, no.
Andy?
I do, actually. Um, so earlier this month, there were um, a number of Girl Scouts and Brownies and Daisy's that were involved in a um, excellent scavenger hunt. Um, and they were able to work in teams even though they were doing this remotely and, and, and at distance from each other. So you may have seen some of them running all over town, taking pictures in front of um, Casey over in Mudville or local businesses and things like that. One of their tasks was to contact a um, elected official in town and um, kind of communicate with them as part of that, some, you know, civic action and kind of engaging. Um, and I got a letter that was actually hand-delivered to me. I just wanted to read a couple of quick excerpts from it because I really thought it was wonderful to hear from students' perspective. And they were um, very appreciative of everything that the schools are doing to um, work in their hardest to get all kids back into class. I'm happy to inform you that all of our teachers are helping us stay on top of our work. We're trying to stay really positive. Um, and then at the end, just thanking um, the teachers and the committee for all the hard work that we've done so far this year and to um, to keep that up and to keep kids safe in school. So um, I think it's wonderful whenever kids engage with us. I know it's terrific. We haven't had a whole lot of presentations of um, different groups, the DI group or um, the robotics group. So certainly um, that's something I'm looking forward to in the future, is getting more of those types of um, nice stories back in, back in, in front of us in our meetings.
So I'm going to jump in with you because that was my thing tonight as well. Um, so kudos to the leader, Julie Winston and, and really what a great um, a scavenger hunt. And, and I think there was a little more to the communication. She wanted this, the children to reach out with the positives that they've seen this year. And I just thought how important that is to remind everyone, including ourselves, that there is positive. There's, there's always light after darkness. So I opened the mail the other day and here's this letter. Dear Stacy, I'm writing to you as part of Girl Scouts. I wanted to share something positive about the school year. The first thing that comes to mind is how we are all safe. You have made it possible for us to go in person. And I really, in all caps, wanted to tell you that you have done an amazing job protecting us these last few months. Number two, you have also made it possible for me to see my friends. It makes me so happy that I can talk to my friends and then in, in parentheses, not on a video call. Thank you so much. So I um, wrote back to my new little friend, Lauren, and I shared with her that I take absolutely no credit uh, for her feeling safe and reminded her that it's all the, the wonderful staff and teachers and administrators and janitors and cleaning people and everybody in the building, cafeteria workers um, who are making them safe. And I just um, I, I thanked her and I, I said, but you know, just always remember there's sunshine, you know, that comes up. So congratulations to them. That was a really beautiful uh, thing to receive. So I'm glad um, that Andy shared his tonight as well. Catherine, Dawn, Cynthia?
Actually, it's not more of a statement, it's more of a question. So I was just curious as to whether Dr. Cuska has any more um, data on how many of our teachers have either have vaccinations or have had appointments? Like, where are we at with that? I had an opportunity to vaccine Angel, somebody. It was like such a rush to like get them an appointment. I know that's crazy, but it really was.
I don't have the numbers. I just know that we've had a significant number of appointments made. I actually got my first vaccine last night and a little bit of a sore arm, but feeling fine otherwise. Uh, I would, if I had to guess, I'd say we could be up to about fifty percent. But um, I know in Dr. Batello, I think he's had a recent vaccination as well. So we're really moving into a good place. Now, I will say, I wasn't sharing out this yet, just because I'm getting more information, that the regional that we, the regional collaborative we talked about was just approved and that was the one that was signed. But I'm cautious about it, only because I'll tell you why. I don't have any details of when, how, dates. Tentatively, it might start April fifth, but I don't want people to pause if they've already gotten appointments and wait for that because I don't know how that's going to work out. And then we're already going to be coming back in person. So clearly we want people to get vaccinated sooner than that. It would have been great if we could have gotten that news um, prior to all of us killing ourselves to get appointments. But I will say, I do want to thank the PTO parents um, led by Carla Alfred, because she was able to put that group together. I sent out the link to staff and they've gotten, I don't know, fifty-plus people have gotten appointments through them.
That's great.
Going on. And um, today I sent it to two more people because a couple of my staff at central office, you know, with all the emails coming in, weren't really sure about how that works. So I resent it today and I think they already got appointments, Keith, for tomorrow.
Wow.
So this is, the, the, the people that are volunteering in our district, our families, but also at the state level, there are some state programs that are volunteering as well. So it's amazing how many people are helping one another get vaccinated as soon as possible. So that's just another bonus thing of a positive that's happening.
That's great. Thank you for that update.
Can I just say thank you too? Because Carla got me an appointment. I do have legitimate eligibility, but I mean, I was so grateful because it's just such a crazy process and she and that whole team for volunteering your time to help people out throughout town. I just, it's incredible. So thank you.
It is amazing.
Peter, you were gonna, before Dawn, I like, before I leave.
Yeah, just, I mean, it was the same thing. I, I reached out. I did the form yesterday. They contacted me last night. I got a appointment today at five. The PTO parents are awesome and they're, they're, they're really helping people out. We appreciate it.
Great. And, and then, oh, you know what, guys? I forgot to tell you one thing. I just need to report out the warrants that I signed. Lisa, do you mind if I jump in front of you for a second?
Yep.
And so I signed a school bill warrant in the amount of sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-two cents, of which three hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents was COVID-related expenses. Another school bill warrant in the amount of two hundred seventy-six thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy cents, with two hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-six cents related to COVID expenses. A cafeteria warrant in the amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents. And Cynthia, my math is so amazing. The COVID total is six thirty-nine fifteen. And those are the warrants.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Dawn, did you have something?
Just very quickly, as to um, middle school term three starts Tuesday, oh, uh, term three starts Tuesday, March twenty-third. So we made it. Got through term one, term two, final term. Um, also on Tuesday, March twenty-third, for grade eight parents, um, it's the parent information night. Somehow, these babies born in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven are going to high school next year.
Oh, my God, I can't believe it.
And then um, finally, just a thank you to all of our outstanding teachers, our staff, all of our administrators for all of the work that you've done in the last few weeks and still have ahead of you until the full in-person um, return, returns on April fifth and April twenty-sixth. So thank you very much.
Catherine, did you have anything?
I didn't. It's the third time you've asked me. I don't have anything to say.
Stacy, I don't want to, I did forget one thing. I'm trying to be brief, but there's just so much going on.
That's okay.
Tomorrow, at the end of the week update, I'm going to get the information out about the high school and I'm going to embed it in there with um, hopefully the, then the principal will get the link out for that form. But the other good thing that's happening is um, there's work going on right now, led by Jess Beatty, Kelly Cam. I think that she's reached out to Jackie Weiner and different people to help present and a social emotional night for parents as we transition back into full in-person. So I believe the date, if I'm not mistaken, is going to be, was it March twenty-ninth? But I'll, I'll get that date out tomorrow. I have some information in my emails from Jess Beatty. But as you know, Jess, um, our middle school assistant principal of the year is a very dedicated SEL supporter in her work as a former guidance counselor. She's done an amazing job putting together a small group. SEL supports interventions at the middle school currently as we speak are going on. And because we know this is very timely, um, they're rushing to get this together for parents. So we'll send that information out tomorrow, once I have all the firm um, dates. We're also going, I'm also asking principals to put together some type of parent um, question nights too, some, maybe so, an FAQ, but in, by Zoom. So those dates will be coming out. I mean, there's so much for them to do. So I'm trying not to put too much onto them, but I know parents are anxious as well. So we'll, we'll get those dates out by school. I will, I won't be sending those out, but I just want people to be aware of all the things. sending those out, but I just want people to be aware of all the things that our our staff and administrators are doing to try to support this in learning process.
Dr. Cuska, is that like just another extension of sort of like pandemic parenting in a sense?
It is related to that. And we'll have a panel of people speaking and answering questions, but we won't have it be all it'll all be done with our own staff.
That's great. That's great timing for that, for sure.
So if I ask Catherine again, Susan, are you going to have something? Okay. And Ann Louise, did you have anything? Okay. No. Okay. Lisa?
So we had our CPAC meeting, CPAC board meeting, Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And a couple of things out of that, they are, we can't remember details on this, but on March 31, they're having a let's get organized event, some kind of virtual workshop. If memory serves, it has to do with executive functioning and that sort of stuff, helping kids with ADHD. But the details will be on their Facebook page. They are working hard on a new website. But right now they're updating stuff like that on their Facebook page. And then just a quick shout out to Kelly Camp because everyone, she got a lot of praise at that meeting for the transparency and the efforts to collaborate particularly, well, across the board with CPAC, but also what we gave her, you know, what we were really happy about at this last meeting was she's really made a lot of efforts around a better survey for parents who right after their IEP meetings can weigh in and give some feedback on what that process was like for them. So I just want to encourage parents to fill out those surveys. It is anonymous. And she really does look at the data. Her team looks at the data. And I think she really is making a concerted effort to make sure that parents feel heard. So just wanted to to make sure and and encourage people to fill out those surveys. It's been going on for a while, but she keeps tweaking it to try to get more information, higher quality information, and to really make the the process more transparent. So that's it. Oh, do we want to go straight into the statement now? Okay. I'm reading a statement on behalf of the Holliston School Committee. And just for people at home who might not know, the Holliston Federation of Teachers, the HFT, is the teachers' union. I'm sure most people probably know that, but just in case. So this is on behalf of the Holliston School Committee. Dear Holliston friends and neighbors, we know there have been questions about the Holliston teachers' contracts in recent days, and we want to acknowledge your concerns. While we hope to have an agreement soon, we would like to relay some facts to provide a bit of context that appears to be missing from the public conversation. The Negotiation Subcommittee, which is three members of the school committee, and the Holliston Federation of Teachers came to a tentative agreement on March 12, 2020, after several negotiating sessions. That evening, Dr. Brad Jackson, Superintendent of Schools, announced the closing of schools district wide in response to the pandemic. A tentative agreement must be ratified, voted on by the majority of membership of the HFT and by the majority of the school committee and the town administrator. When that tentative agreement was brought before the entire seven-member school committee and the town administrator on May 7, 2020, a majority rejected it because we were facing a changing and increasingly concerning financial picture resulting from the pandemic. With so many unknowns, one of our top priorities was to avoid layoffs of any HPS staff, including teachers, paraprofessionals, and support staff. By July 2020, 48 Massachusetts districts had laid off thousands of educators due to COVID-19, with more to follow after that. And we do have links. This is going to go out in our newsletter, and we do have links with a little bit more information on some of these things. When an agreement fails to ratify, both sides return to the table. The HFT and the Holliston School Committee continue to bargain through the summer and fall, despite no clear economic guidance at the local, state, or national levels. Massachusetts ended fiscal year 2020 on July 30, 2020, with a nearly $700 million budget gap. Massachusetts passed a temporary budget to fund the state government through the end of October 2020. A federal coronavirus relief package allocating funds to schools for specific and limited purposes patched in March passed in March 2020. The next federal coronavirus relief packages did not pass until late December 2020 and March 2021. Coronavirus relief funds are not permitted to be used for salary increases. In November 2020, the HFT requested that we engage in mediation, to which we promptly agreed. We jointly filed for mediation with HFT on February 23, 2020, 2021. From that time, the process requires that the parties engage a third-party mediator. The first available opportunity to engage in mediation will occur later this month based on mediator availability. Mediation offers both sides an opportunity to resolve outstanding issues with an objective third party. In the meantime, all teachers are protected by the existing contract, including all rights, benefits, and the salary increases that come from both step and lane progression. All teachers move up a step and receive a salary increase every year until they get to the top step, the 14th step. They also are eligible for lane increases when they achieve higher educational status, for example, a master's degree and so on. Teachers with their grace, patience, and dedication have been vital to our ability to educate our children this year under challenging circumstances. We are confident that the upcoming mediation will achieve a fair agreement within the budgetary constraints of our town and reflect our respect for all educators and programs in Holliston Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Keith, do we have, we had two people who wanted to speak at public comments. Are they here?
I have nobody waiting right now.
Okay. Well, we'll give them another minute.
I don't know if there's a Zoom problem or something tonight, or I don't.
Lisa, thank you for reading that.
Somebody's coming. I guess there's some Zoom problem. Looks like.
Can she call in or or somebody? Can they call in?
Give me one second. Somebody, can they sing or something? Dead air is bad for the TV.
They're saying, somebody is saying that the PIN number is not working.
I passed along the exact thing from Zoom, so I'm not sure what's down. I'm trying to see and get them in a different way.
Do they need the PIN if they call in?
Yes.
Lisa, can you just text it to them?
Well, they have it. It doesn't work.
Oh.
Right, so.
But is it the same as, oh, it's sent from Zoom, never mind.
We're sure it's the Zoom, not the Zoom from executive session.
Oh, yeah, that could be it. Or not. I'm just looking at it.
Think so.
This one ends in 37.
Can we just say the PIN number?
It's a, is she, I believe she has the Google Meet PIN. So did you send us a calendar invite? She might be on the Google instead of the.
Oh, she might be on Google Meet instead of Zoom.
Maybe I sent them the whole thing. Let me try resetting the whole thing.
Maybe just copy the Zoom link into an email versus the, sometimes it duplicate adds a Google on the calendar.
It does. Mine always adds a Google meet option.
I prefer the phone, but we'll assume they're not going to do something better.
I have the, I have the Zoom up. I could copy it and email it very quickly, too.
I just did for one. Let me do the other. Hold on. Hold on.
You know, we could have moved two classrooms by now.
Let's see if this helps.
They have a Google Meet PIN?
Yeah.
That's not the right thing.
Popped in there, yeah. So I sent them the Zoom link itself. So instead of being, I'll just make sure there's nothing bad coming. So I'm not in doing anything here either. So. Yeah, here's one. Here's Peggy Payne. Okay?
Okay.
Peggy, you're up. Just please give your name and address for the committee for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm trying. I'm having trouble hearing you. Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I was giving a Zoom link. Thank you for fixing that. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it. My name is Peggy Payne. I live here in town. I have seven children, and they've attended Holliston Public Schools for many years. My kids have been in the French immersion, Spanish immersion, Montessori, extended day, integrated preschool, and traditional programs. While I understand the concerns you had last spring with respect to voting in our teachers' contract, I respectfully request that you again put forth a budget that supports the teachers' contract you bargained for over a year ago, just as you did last year. The previous budgets, fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 that are posted online include comprehensive, detailed information for non-salary payroll and special education, in addition to fixed costs versus FinCom guidelines and budget subcommittees recommendation, as well as the superintendent's recommended budget. This year for fiscal year 2022, the only thing posted is the recommended budget by the superintendent. That budget includes a 4.6% increase in level services. How much of the $1,498,003 increase over last year for level service is dedicated to salary? I tried to find more information by searching through school committee minutes, but there have been no minutes posted publicly since the teachers started working under an expired contract last fall. There are also zero subcommittee minutes for this year. When I checked previous years, there were minutes for all meetings. I find the lack of transparency and posted information really concerning. We've come together this year to support one another. We've asked our teachers to show up every day during a pandemic, amid outbreaks, without vaccinations, and under an expired contract. Just tonight, we're asking them to switch schools, to work longer hours. Anyone that's ever been in a school knows, no teacher is is moving their classroom across the field next to Rams in a half in a half a day, whether some high school athletes show up or not. Our teachers showed up. Now it's time for us to show up. We shop local because we don't want to lose our shops and restaurants. If we want to keep the talented, dedicated, and innovative teachers that we have, who have shown up for us, we need to show them that we value them. Tonight, I ask you, school committee, to keep your promise and put forth a budget that funds the teachers' contract that you bargained collectively in good faith for over a year ago, and then let the taxpayers decide. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Okay, we have one other person here. Jamie, you're up. If you can just give your name and address, please, for the record. Muted. Muted, Jamie.
Hi, Jamie Cottone. Sorry, let me just turn this other sound off. Jamie Cottone, 13 Senate Road in Milford. And I am the president of the Holliston Federation of Teachers. So thank you for for sharing this time with me. I apologize. My son is with me. This is a very difficult time of the evening to be making a public comment. So I've got one four-year-old asleep and a six-year-old on my lap. So my name is Jamie Cottone. I'm the president of the Holliston Federation of Teachers, and I represent nearly 400 teachers, paraprofessionals, and secretaries. So thank you for allowing me the time today to speak with you about the school budget. The action people are seeing around town is teachers advocating for themselves. It is not meant to be oppositional, divisive, or personal. Through this action, we are garnering support from the town to encourage the school committee to put forth a budget that supports the deal made in good faith prior to the onset of the pandemic. The outpouring of support from the town has been overwhelming and bringing some of us to tears. We have received numerous personal emails, residents signing a petition, public statements on social media, and even hosting yard signs. Many of the teachers in Holliston have personal relationships with each of you. We teach your children. We care for your children. We love your children. It is not us versus you. We are not against you. We are in this together, and it is our hope that with the support we all see from the community, that you will choose to take the necessary steps to ratify the agreement and put forth a budget that supports the deal that was made. The financial calamity that was anticipated did not materialize, nor did the town experience a decrease in revenue or state aid. We are looking to you to support this deal and take the necessary steps prior to town meeting to allow the voting taxpayers to weigh in. So thank you very much for your time tonight. I appreciate you giving us. Thank you.
Okay, great. And with that, public comment is now closed. And I am, we are, our next meeting is April 1, unless otherwise changed based on ability to post publicly for the public hearing for the budget. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Dawn?
I'm sorry. Did you say the next meeting was April 1? I thought we were having another meeting on Tuesday. No?
Well, I guess, I guess we needed to confirm. Well, I guess we needed to confirm that afterwards, so I was not sure and was not comfortable announcing it where we didn't decide on time, et cetera.
Okay.
So next published one as of right now is April 1st. Tomorrow, there will be a posting for Tuesday or Wednesday, once we agree on that.
Moved by Cynthia. Nobody wants to leave the meeting, well.
Seconded by Andy.
We'll be here all night.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Andy. Roll call vote. Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Listopnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Yancead?
Where'd she go?
I said yes.
Okay, we didn't hear you, sorry.
You've been muted.
And Mrs. Raffey, yes. It is 10:04 PM. Thank you all, have a wonderful evening.
Good night, everyone.